Good afternoon. I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in this chamber that there is no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public are permitted. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the rolls to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden.
Here.
Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Counselor Durkin.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Louis Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Peppin.
Here.
Counselor Santana.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
And Counselor Worell. Quorum is present.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Now it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy Reverend Heather Concanon from Theodore Parker Church in West Roxbury invited by Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, you have the floor. After the invocation, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. I am so glad to introduce Reverend Heather Concanon for this week's invocation. Reverend Concanon has lived in Boston since 2006 and serves as the minister at Theodore Parker Unitarian Universalist Church in West Roxbury. Prior to Theodore Parker Church, Reverend Concanon served for nearly a decade as the Minister of Faith Formation at the Unitarian Universalist Area Church in Sherborne, Massachusetts, if I had that right. And before that, she earned her Master's of Divinity degree from Andover Newton Theological School and undergraduate degree in Women and Gender Studies at Simmons College here in Boston. As Reverend Concanon has a certificate in Pastoral Care and Counseling and brings with her a passion for social justice, relationship building, meaning-making for all ages, as well as a passion for ritual and worship. Through her ministry, Reverend Concanon is committed to creating spaces where people of all ages can grow in their faith. As a lifelong Unitarian Universalist, she knows firsthand the power of this tradition to shape lives and build beloved communities. Outside of church, Reverend Concanon enjoys pottery, digging in the garden, getting outside, playing board games. I don't know, is there one in particular? No?
No, two.
Okay. I need some suggestions for my kids, but also, and singing. She lives in Roselandale, so a constituent of Counselor Peppin's, with her partner Justin. They're three kids, two cats, and a housemate family. They share the house with, and by her own admission, an excessive number of houseplants. So it's my pleasure to welcome Reverend Heather today, and I'll leave it to you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the introduction and the invitation, Counselor Weber. And as Counselor Weber mentioned, I have been a Boston resident since 2006, and I love this city. It's an honor to be with you all today, and I thank you for your service to our city. I am, as Counselor Weber mentioned, a Unitarian Universalist minister, and in our tradition, one of our core values is that of interdependence. We know that our lives and our survival and our well-being is fundamentally and inextricably linked with one another and with our earth, and that what affects one of us affects the whole ecosystem. We know that the very air we breathe has circulated throughout our planet for millennia, has been created by the plant life around us and by the ocean's organisms. And we know too that the food that we eat depends on the bees and the butterflies that go from blossom to blossom, pollinating each plant, that our food is grown and harvested and transported to our city by people we will likely never meet. And we know that harm done to one area ripples out and extends far beyond the initial injury, and that care taken in any area and repair and healing in any area benefits the whole. Parker Palmer, a Quaker teacher and writer, says that politics is the essential and eternal human effort to craft the common life on which we all depend. And I think sometimes in our world we forget this. We forget our interdependence, that we are here for each other, and we are here in this room where decisions are made in an effort to craft that common life here in our city, that common life on which we all depend. So I invite us to join in a spirit of reflection and prayer. And I invite us to start by taking a breath together. Spirit of Life. Divine spark that flows through all of humanity, known by many names and across many traditions. Today, we take a moment to pause and to remember our interconnectedness. We remember that we are not isolated beings, that we have not come to this moment solely as individuals, but that we are part always of larger ecosystems: families, communities, neighborhoods, cities. Spirit of Life, help us to remember that we depend on one another, that the decisions we make affect the whole, and that we have a responsibility to help one another thrive. Help us to turn toward compassion instead of competition, towards cooperation instead of conflict. Help us to remember that we are interconnected in more ways than we can know, and that that is both a mystery and a miracle. Spirit of Life, may our elected leaders serve as stewards of our interdependence. May our elected leaders help us to craft a common life that serves the whole, and may they seek to build a world and a city that honors our interdependence, a world where we take care of one another, a place where all are held with dignity, compassion, and in community, a city where all might thrive. May it be so, and amen.
We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much Reverend Parker for that, Reverend Concanon for that beautiful invocation, and thank you Counselor Weber for inviting her. It is, today we have two presentations, one from Counselor Peppin recognizing our school bus drivers, and one from Counselor Weber recognizing Danielle Johnson. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor and five minutes.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It is with great honor to celebrate a group of unsung heroes, our dedicated school bus drivers, in honor of National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, which will be next week on April 22nd. To all the school bus drivers here in Boston, I want to say this from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Every morning, before the sun rises, you start your day with a mission, to safely transport our most precious cargo, our children. In every afternoon, after a long day, you make sure they return home just as safely. You are the first friendly face our students see in the morning and the last one they see before headed home. Rain or shine, through traffic, snowstorms, and early mornings, you show up. You do so with patience, with professionalism, and with a deep sense of responsibility. What you do is not easy, and yet you do it with grace, with care, and with unwavering dedication. In a city like Boston, where our neighborhoods are diverse and spread out and complicated streets, your role is even more vital. You are the connection that helps bridge families to schools, that supports work and parents, and that gives our students a stable and trusted routine each day. You are more than just drivers as well. You are protectors, mentors, sometimes even counselors. You keep a watchful eye, you offer a kind word, and provide a safe space during the quiet minutes before and after school. I personally took the bus for six years, from kindergarten to fifth grade, and I remember Mr. Simpson on HS95, he would ask me every day if I had a good day at school. And if my mom wasn't at the corner of my bus stop, he would go out of his way to drop me off in front of my building. So thank you, Mr. Simpson. We don't thank you enough. So today, we're pausing to make it clear. We see you, we appreciate you, we value you more than words can express. On behalf of the entire Boston community, our schools, our families, and especially our Boston City Council, thank you for the work you do, the miles you drive, the early alarms you set, and the care you give. You are an essential part of what makes the city move, and we are grateful every single day. Happy National Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Congratulations.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Emmanuel Marcelos. I'm the president of the School Bus Drivers Union. And thank you, Madam President, thank you to this body, special thanks to you, Mr. Peppin, for this great honor. We are pleased, honored to be here on behalf of the drivers standing by me and those 800-plus more who could not make it here. We appreciate this. You always got our back, Mr. Peppin, and we appreciate you for this. Again, we are honored. We, like you said, we transport the most precious cargo, and those are our kids on those buses, and we value what we do very, very much. So thank you for the honor.
So on behalf of Council President Ruci Louis Jean and myself, we want to present them with a resolution declaring April 22nd, 2025, as School Bus Driver Appreciation Day in the city of Boston. Congratulations, everybody.
Can I call all my colleagues up as well?
Don't believe we forgot that part.
Guys, guys, bend down on the front. Yeah.
Thank you. Bonjour, okay. Okay, pas de problème. Thank you. Thank you so much for being with us, the bus drivers. Merci un film, contente un film à nous à ici. So thank you so much. Merci un film. C'est la caillou là. Yeah, c'est la caillou là. Merci un film. Okay. We are now moving on to our next presentation, and it will be done by Counselor Weber for the one and only Danielle Johnson.
Okay. Thank you to our bus drivers for everything they're doing. Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Great job, Counselor Peppin. Okay, so I'm up here to recognize Danielle Johnson, who we all know and are lucky to have the opportunity to work with. First, I guess this is Danielle's birthday month, so happy birthday. Yeah, well, yeah. She didn't have a whole lot to do with that. She got born, but we're here to congratulate her for the work that she has done, which resulted in Mass Lawyers Weekly recognizing her as an up-and-coming lawyer, you know, in the area for her work as the director of the Office of Housing Stability. The Up-and-Coming Lawyers List highlights attorneys who have been members of the bar for 10 years or less and who have already distinguished themselves. Massachusetts Lawyers Weekly also recognizes excellence in pro bono work and other things. But, you know, the fact that they have chosen to recognize Danielle is a remarkable accomplishment for someone who hasn't been practicing that long, from my perspective, as somebody who's practiced for 18 years. You know, I just want to take a moment to read what, you know, what Danielle said when they asked her, you know, about her work, or, I'm sorry, what they wrote. Massachusetts Lawyers Weekly wrote that "As an advocate, attorney, and educator committed to expanding access to justice, Danielle Johnson's work focuses on preventing displacement, ensuring legal representation, and shaping policy that protects vulnerable communities." You know, one of the things Danielle spoke about in her profile in Mass Lawyers Weekly is something that I've gone to see how she shines in this role, working on access to counsel here in the city. You know, I found not only an advocate for the program, but somebody who knew how to get things done and whose priorities were in the place where she wanted to do as much as she could to protect vulnerable folks in Boston. And, you know, I was so impressed with Danielle's ability to sort of bring that program to being. And so, you know, I think her actions speak for themselves, and I know we've all benefited having such a capable director of the Office of Housing Stability, and not just us on the council. I think everyone in Boston has benefited from the great work that Danielle has done. So I just want to, I thank her. I have a recognition for her, but before that, I think I'd like to cede the floor to Danielle, and I just want to thank her for everything she's done for us.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. Thank you, Counsel, Madam President, Louis Jean, Counselor Weber, and honorable members of the City Council. Thank you so much for this recognition. It means a great deal to me. Thank you to my partner Emerson Peña, who's here in the stands, and I believe my mom is watching virtually as well, so I want to give them a shout out. Deep appreciation to the council for the work that you all do. You all exemplify leadership, commitment, and what it means to be a true public servant. So for that, I thank you. It's not easy work, but it's necessary, and you all, day to day, show just what good leadership looks like. To my colleagues at the Mayor's Office of Housing, of course, thank you. Some of the hardest working people I know. A special thank you to Chief Sheila Dillon, whose leadership continues to inspire and push me forward. Thank you to the city of Boston. I'm a transplant, but like so many others, I've grown to love the city deeply. I'm proud to serve it, to fight for housing stability and call it home. Of course, again, a special thanks to President Louis Jean, who knows the fight in housing court well and continues to elevate housing inequities. And of course, to my counselor, Counselor Weber, Team West Roxbury, I appreciate your tireless work. And yes, I'll be calling on all of you. Just a heads up, I teach access to justice, so I will be asking you all to guest lecture at some point. Counselor Louis Jean has already done so, so to her, I say thank you. But thank you again for your belief in me, and more importantly, for all the great work that you do, and we'll keep working. So appreciate the honor.
I'd like to invite all my colleagues up for a photo.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Weber, for that presentation. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of April 9th, 2025. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The minutes of the April 9th meeting are approved. Mr. Clerk, could you please update the record to reflect that Counselor Worell is now present and with us? Thank you. And that Counselor Coletta Zapata is now present and with us? Thank you. We are now on to communications from our honor the mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0885 and 0886?
Docket number 0885, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $18 million in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 25 Community Development Block Grant awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Housing. The grant will fund Housing Economic Development and Social Services Program. The award amount is estimated from prior years. Docket number 0886, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $6 million in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 25 Home Investment Partnerships Program Grant awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Housing. The grant will fund the production of new affordable rental and homeownership housing and also provide operating support for community development corporations. The award amount is estimated from prior years.
Thank you. Docket number 0885 and 0886 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0887?
Docket number 0887, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $4,149,200 in the form of a grant for the Youth Works Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund a summer and school year jobs program that will provide leadership development, skills training, and career exploration for low-income at-risk youth ages 14 through 25.
Thank you. Docket number 0887 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0888 and 0889?
Docket number 0888, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $4 million in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 25 Housing for Persons with AIDS awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Housing. The grant will fund services for income-eligible individuals and families affected by AIDS. The amount, the award amount is estimated from prior years. Docket number 0889, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2 million in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 25 Emergency Solutions Grant awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Housing. The grant will fund the street outreach, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing assistance, and shelter services. The award amount is estimated from prior years.
Thank you. These docket will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0890?
Docket number 0890, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $200,000 in the form of a grant for the Immigrant Advancement Fund Grant awarded by the Boston Foundation to be administered by the Office of Immigrant Advancement. The grant will fund programs, initiatives, events, and small grants that enable immigrants to play an active role in the economic, civic, social, and cultural life of the city of Boston.
Thank you. Docket number 0890 will be referred to the Committee on Civil Rights, Racial Equity, and Immigrant Advancement. Mr. Clerk, the chair recognizes Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
I apologize. I'm not sure if this is the right time or not, but docket 887?
Yes.
I thought that would be assigned to the Committee on Workforce, Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, but I think you signed it to another committee.
Yes, it was assigned to the Strong Women, Families, and Communities. This grant is one that has historically gone to that committee. I think the office that it has passed through has changed. Before, it was a different office, and this year, it was placed in the Labor and Workforce Development Office, but the content of the grant is the same, which is why the decision was made to keep it in the Strong Women, Families, and Communities.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I guess to the chair, I did reserve, I think, some hearing for next week, but which can be, I can pass that off, so we'll coordinate on that. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, docket number zero, but thank you. It was a discussion point because of the very reasons that you raised, but I appreciate that, Counselor Weber. Mr. Clerk, are we on docket number 0891?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0891?
Docket number 0891, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to
Docket number 0891, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $180,000 in the form of a grant for the Hazardous Mitigation Plan Update 2026 BRIC Grant awarded by the Federal Management Agency, passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, to be administered by Emergency Preparedness. The grant will fund a sustained pre-disaster natural hazard mitigation program to reduce overall risk to the population and structures while also reducing reliance on funding from actual disaster declarations.
Thank you. Docket number 0891 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0892?
Docket number 0892, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $137,753 in the form of a grant for the Fiscal Year 25 Fiscal Year 26 Retired Senior Volunteer Program Grant awarded by the Corporation for National and Community Service to be administered by the H-Strong Commission. The grant will fund administration for senior community service volunteers, including reimbursement for meals and travel expenses.
Thank you. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0893?
Docket number 0893, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $120,000 in the form of a grant for the CJP Community Security Initiative awarded by the Combined Jewish Philanthropies to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the installation of CCTV cameras outside the Jewish institutions to be monitored by the Police Department in hopes of protecting faith-based institutions.
Thank you. Docket number 0893 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets numbers 0894 and 0895?
Docket number 8, 0894, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F regarding TNC Right Chair Arrest filed on docket number 0617, passed by the City Council on March 5th, 2025, and docket number 0895, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F regarding students with disabilities filed on docket number 0775, passed by the City Council on April 2nd, 2025.
Thank you. Dockets number 0894 and 0895 will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of public officers and others, but I did want to pause, and I know we had folks here from Justice for Housing, so just wanted to uplift them. And earlier, we had kids here from the Gru, from the Mad Hunt, and from the Greenwood, and so just wanted to highlight them and their visit to City Hall. Okay, Mr. Clerk, we are now on to reports of public officers and others. Would you please read dockets number 0896 to 0898?
Docket number 0896, notice received from the Mayor of the appointment of Jessica Folkright as Chairperson of the Building Emissions Reduction and Disclosure Ordinance Review Board for a term expiring on April 24th, 2026. Docket number 0897, communication was received from Counselor Fernandez Anderson regarding Nuestra Comunidad Development Corporation and its leadership. And docket number 0898, notice received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the Mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of April 2nd, 2025.
Thank you. These dockets will be placed on file. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0822 to 0845?
Docket numbers 0822 through 0824, orders for the Fiscal Year 26 Operating Budget, including annual appropriations for department, departmental operations for the School Department and for other post-employment benefits. Docket numbers 0825 through 0827, orders for capital fund credit appropriations. Docket numbers 0828 through 0830, orders for the capital budget, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements. And docket numbers 0831 through dockets 0845, orders authorizing limits for departmental revolving funds, including law, tourism, arts and culture, environment, Boston Centers for Youth and Families, schools, and police, and other budget-related dockets.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means officially launched FY26 budget season with a series of four hearings on Boston Public Schools held across April 14th and April 15th. These sessions tied to dockets number 0822 through 0833 offered a deep dive into the investments, challenges, and equity goals shaping the educational experience of Boston's youth. From the administration, we had Superintendent Mary Skipper, CFO David Bloom, Dr. Linda Chen, Dr. Sam DePina, and Dr. Anna Tavarez. For hearing one on dockets number 822 through 083, through 0830, held on Monday, April 14th at 10:00 a.m., the council discussed key FY26 budget priorities, including inclusion, multilingual learners, special education services, curriculum, and post-secondary outcomes. Council's president included Vice Chair of the Council, I mean, Vice Chair of the Committee, Vice Chair Peppin, Counselors Braden, Flynn, Weber, Fitzgerald, Santana, Murphy, Mejia, and Council President Louis Jean. We received a letter of absence from Counselor Durkin. Councils raised concerns about an $8 million bilingual funding cut, which we were told was because of staff recoded and sought clarity on the $10 million added for inclusive education and $4.5 million for multilingual learner supports. The administration emphasized that multilingual services would continue through certified teachers and highlighted the rollout of new dual-language programs, including Cape Verdean and Spanish at the Blackstone. Councils also pressed for more native language supports, equitable access to upper-school bilingual programs, and metrics to track inclusion success. Early indicators showed increased K1 through K2 inclusion, with staff tailored to student needs rather than a universal model. The hearing also covered curriculum investments like StudySync and Illustrated Math, new post-secondary tracking efforts, expanded financial literacy offerings, and continued funding for parent ESOL classes. Councils underscored the importance of cultural competence site councils and sustained sports for students exiting ESOL services. For hearing two on docket number 0822 through 0830, which is held on Monday, April 14th at 2:00 p.m., the councils discussed key wraparound services in Boston Public Schools, included arts and music, health and wellness, schools' meals, athletics, and programs for unhoused and at-risk students. Councils and tenants included Vice Chair Peppin, Counselors Flynn, Santana, Murphy, Durkin, Mejia, Council President Louis Jean, Counselor Fitzgerald, and Weber. Counselor Braden submitted a letter of absence. At the hearing, we discussed the importance of services that support students beyond academics with wellness, safety, and community connection as core to student success. Councils raised concerns about food waste, the quality of school meals, and access to locally sourced produce in light of recent federal cuts. BPS confirmed plans to expand in-house food production through a phased-out, build-out of the central kitchen. The council also examined staffing level for nurses and psychologists, the availability of AEDs, and efforts to support student experience in homelessness. BPS affirmed that all schools are staffed with a full-time nurse and continue to triage family needs through student support teams. Updates were provided on restorative justice program, access to school libraries, expansion of arts and music instruction, and summer and weekend enrichment opportunities. Councils emphasized the need to track student participation in after-school programs and to preserve impactful partnerships amid budget constraints. For hearing number three on dockets number 0822 through 0832, held on Tuesday, April 15th at 10:00 a.m., the council examined Boston Public Schools' long-term facilities plan focusing on mergers and closures, hub school expansion, transportation, and support for new arrivals and unhoused students. Councils and tenants included Vice Chair Peppin, Counselor Braden, Counselor Braden, Counselor Flynn, Weber, Fitzgerald, Santana, Murphy, Coletta Zapata, Mejia, and Council President Louis Jean. We also received a letter of absence from Counselor Durkin. Questions were raised around the use of MSBA funding, equity in school consolidation, and the community impact of closures. BPS reported $21 million in savings from recent and upcoming consolidations, 5,200 students experiencing homelessness, and explained how the racial equity planning tool and multilingual engagement shaped transitions. Brighton High was praised as a rising regional model with investments in science labs, arts, and athletics, while councils advocated for more community use of school facilities in coordination with parks for field readiness. The district confirmed a $20 million placeholder in the capital budget for the Blackstone School, which requires a full rebuild and highlighted short-term repairs and new leadership in place to maintain, to maintain learning conditions. The West, the West Roxbury complex remains vacant and is being maintained for potential future use. However, there are no immediate plans for it because of capital constraints. Councils emphasized the importance of consistent updates and student-centered planning throughout all facility changes. Updates were also shared on improved athletic transportation with 100% coverage since February, ongoing and future savings from the Zoom app, and exploration of bus camera partnerships. Councils requested more transparency on student impacts and staff transitions related to closures and mergers. For hearing number four on docket number 0822 through 0833, the committee held a hearing on Tuesday, April 15th at 2:00 p.m. to review the Boston Public Schools FY26 budget related to partnerships, external funds, central office operations, contract and staffing, and the BPS Technology Revolving Fund. Councils and tenants included Counselors Flynn, Santana, Murphy, Durkin, Mejia, Council President Louis Jean, Counselor Fitzgerald, Weber, Braden, and Vice Chair Peppin. We'll share the end of the meeting in my absence. This hearing shifted the conversation to district-wide operations and long-term financial planning. Councils examined how BPS leverages more than 700 partnerships from grassroots organizations to major nonprofits to provide student enrichment, including the $5.7 million Peace Partnership Fund, and asked how partner impact is tracked actively distributed. The administration also discussed reductions to central office roles and contracts while adding 37 new school-based teaching positions to support, to support inclusive and multilingual learning. The hearing included updates on the Technology Revolving Fund, which recycles old devices to fund new student laptops and plans to mitigate federal funding losses post-ESER. Councils raised concerns about contract costs, equity in, in out-of-district placements, which totaled up to $50 million annually, teacher retention, and school safety agreements with BPD. Superintendent Skipper and CFO Bloom emphasized the continued focus on reallocating resources towards student-facing support, deepening community engagement, ensuring fiscal sustainability across the district. Summary of questions and RFIs, we started hearings on BPS in November, held several working sessions before this week's series of hearings. During that process, councils submitted dozens of RFIs. These included requests for data on inclusion, investments, multilingual, and IEP demographics, post-secondary outcome metrics, before and after-school participation, and school, and school library readiness, and all these answers are in your budget folders, along with the budget book. They were very useful during all these hearings, and I hope all my council colleagues have utilized, utilized them. And next up in the budget process, we have overviews of the operating budget and capital plan on Thursday and virtual testimony on Tuesday night. And as Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend that these dockets will remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. These dockets will remain in committee. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0899?
Docket number 0899, Counselor Santana offered the following. Ordinance establishing the Office of LGBTQIA2S+ Advancement.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. He has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Boston has long been a city that leads with compassion, progress, and justice, but we know that true equity requires more than a symbolic support. It requires structure, resources, and dedicated leadership to meet the unique needs of our LGBTQIA2S+ communities, especially our black and brown immigrants, trans, and non-binary neighbors who continue to face systematic disparities in healthcare, housing, employment, and safety. So I say that, also say that I will also be withdrawing this ordinance today from the City Council, and I will be refiling in, at the next council meeting. I just want to make sure that I am communicating with my City Council colleagues. I also want to make sure that I'm communicating with the Office of LGBTQ Advancement and then also with community members. So I will be refining this and will be withdrawing today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Santana. This docket has been withdrawn. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0900?
Docket number 0900, Counselor Mejia offered the following. Ordinance creating a municipal identification card in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank my colleague, Counselor Santana, for his work in this space and based on a conversation that we had previously regarding the, the ordinance that was just read into the record. I believe Counselor Anderson, who is not here today, has been leading in that space, so I'm happy to hear that. We're going to be pausing and making sure that there is some recognition and some support around some of the folks that have been doing this, so thank you, Counselor Santana. So I am proud to introduce this ordinance to create a municipal ID program in Boston. It was shaped in partnership with over 45 LGBTQIA2+ advocates and rooted in the leadership of the trans Latinas unidas who are here today with us. Facing ongoing systemic barriers, especially under the current federal climate, they called for a city ID, and we saw clear opportunity to build upon. Then, first of all, our current Mayor Wu, who was a city counselor at the time when she first introduced it, and then Counselor Arroyo picked up the baton in 2022. With federal restrictions targeting trans and immigrant communities, and although we understand that the Commonwealth has already taken important steps with the Family Mobility Act, a state-level progress still remains incomplete. The city has both the opportunity and responsibility to step in and close the gap. Beyond expanding access and dignity, we're actively exploring how a municipal ID can serve multiple functions by working across city departments. We're in conversation with partners like MOLA and looking to engage the Office of Returning Citizens to identify how this ID could support broader access to services, including for our unhoused residents and promote financial inclusion by encouraging acceptance at banks, shelters, and health centers. As we expand the scope of what this ID can do, we're also prioritizing community trust by ensuring data, privacy, and protections are built into the design from the start. And just for those folks who may not know, municipal ID programs in New York, Chicago, Oakland, Los Angeles, Trenton, Washington, D.C., Princeton, San Francisco, New Haven, among others, have all seen widespread success. The city of Boston can choose to fill this gap and making sure that we are meeting the moment, especially for our trans and immigrant communities, because at the intersection of both, the federal government is making sure that they do everything in their power to create chaos and fear. So this is an opportunity for us here on the municipal level to provide a sense of security to those that we love. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add counselors Braden, Fitzgerald, sorry, please add counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0900, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0901?
Docket number 0901, Counselors Louis Jean and Braden offered the following. Petition for a special law relative to an act relevant to the Office of District Counselor in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor President Louis Jean. Madam President, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to my colleagues and to everyone. I want to thank community for their work in shepherding us to get this done. I am seeking a suspended passage for this ordinance, and I'm going to explain why for this home petition. This home petition does two things. It would waive the special election in the event that there is a vacancy in the District Council seat in District 7. And two, it would ensure that whoever is elected to the District 7 seat in November is seated as expeditiously as possible upon certification of election results in November. This home petition may be a moot point, as some of you may explain, because at this moment, there is not a vacancy in the District 7 Council seat. And there, there may not be one by the deadline of May 8th, but this is us being proactive and providing certainty to the residents of District 7 and to everyone involved about what the timeline for elections would be. We are moving, want to move quickly on this HRP so that we can actually give the residents of D7 time in making sure that they're able to vet and elect the candidate of their choice. And I want to thank Reclaim Roxbury. I want to thank so many in the Roxbury community. I want to thank so many in the Roxbury community. I want to thank Mass Vote, people who are used to doing the work of empowering Black and Brown communities who have asked us to push this forward. I hope we can take a vote today. If we're not able to, there's time on the calendar Friday for us to convene and meet on this matter. It's important that to note that we've had conversations with colleagues, with electeds in our state legislature, State Representative China Tyler, State Senator Liz Miranda, State Rep. John Moran, State Rep. Chris Worrell, and all in alignment and in agreement with the community groups that have asked us to really push this forward, to give certainty to Roxbury residents and to all the residents of D7. That includes the South End, that includes parts of Fenway. I was in Roxbury last night. I was in Roxbury on Sunday and Saturday talking to community members, and the general overall feeling and sense was a special election would not be in the interest of the residents of District 7. If you look at the home rule petition, there are two tables and two counts that I put that shows you what the calendar would look like on the most expeditious calendar possible if, for example, today we got notice of a vacancy in District 7. And even with us moving as quickly as possible, as quickly as allowed under the Charter, that would still mean that the person who would win a special election would not get into the seat prior to early to mid-August. And then they would be running for reelection, or they would be running in the general preliminary September 9th and in the general November 4th. That is unnecessary for District 7 at this point. We know that community in District 7, they already experience low voter turnout, and that it becomes more exponential during a special election. And I want, and I understand that there are arguments on both sides here, but I think that the best thing for us to do, to show leadership for the city, to give certainty to the residents of District 7, to be working in partnership with community, is to make sure that we can give people assurance on what the election schedule would be. My heart literally drops when I hear from residents who say, "I had no idea there was an election. I didn't vote because I didn't know." That happens even more so when you have a special election. And I can tell you that as someone who has worked in voting rights, who cares deeply about promoting democracy, who was a student of democracy, and now as an elected, a practitioner of democracy, this is all about how we are bringing the people closer to democracy. And I understand the questions of representation, which is why this home rule petition goes out of its way to ensure that whoever wins in November would also be seated. So I'm asking my colleagues to support this, and I thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I rise to also thank my colleague and Madam President Louis Jen for bringing this home rule petition forward. I think it's really important to do this. As she said, this takes away a lot of the uncertainty around timelines, et cetera. And when you look at the statistics for turnout in special elections in off years when there isn't a mayoral race, it's very, very low turnout. And even in a mayoral election cycle, if there's a mayoral reelection, as we have this year, the turnout in District 7 is usually 33%. But if it's a special election, the turnout in that scenario drops down to 13, no, 8%. It's a dramatic drop. So it's really important that, first of all, there's no vacancy as of today. We have no vacancy. There's a large field of candidates running for District 7, and the community, as Council President Louis Jen has already mentioned, has expressed the interest and the importance of making sure that we provide the District 7 community with adequate time to meet and meet their candidates, a large field, and make the best decision for District 7. I think there's no benefit, as speaking personally, I feel that skipping or not having a special election allows the candidates and the residents to really get to know each other, as they probably do already, but to really get into the details of what their vision is for the district and to thoroughly vet the candidates and come up with their choice of the best candidate to represent the district. So I urge my colleagues to vote in support of a suspended pass of this home rule petition today. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta Zapata. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council Worrell. And I believe I was after Council Mejia, so I want to see my time to Council Mejia as a co-sponsor. Sorry.
Councilor Coletta Zapata?
Okay. I just want to be cognizant of fairness here. So I am in favor of this home rule petition. I think the strongest argument for me in canceling the special election and aligning with the regular election cycle is rooted in our understanding of what democracy truly requires. It isn't just about casting ballots. It's about people coming together in conversation in community with a shared vision. It's about neighbors talking to neighbors, having the time to meet candidates and fully engage in a full and thoughtful discussion about the future of our city. Boston has always been a city that has an extremely deep civic culture. You really have to show up and win the trust of voters. You have to earn it, and candidates need to show up in every neighborhood, speak every single language, and build real grassroots support. We did this in 2021. Members of this body voted for that. We did it in 2021 with the mayoral election, and had this been produced in 2023, I would have voted for it. And we have this in front of us today, and I think that it is the right thing to do. There are broader conversations that we have to have as a council about potentially changing this law, and I am all here for that. If that gets produced and put in my committee, I will happily co-sponsor it and pass it expeditiously, but it just simply does not make sense to have four elections in one Postponing this decision to the regular election allows for a fuller, fairer democratic process, and so that's why I support this home rule petition and want to thank the original co-sponsors for putting it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank my colleagues for their leadership in this space and really understanding what this moment is all about. I just want to go on the record in rising in support of this home rule petition because the voters of District 7 deserve a fair and transparent process to choose who will represent them. Right now, what District 7 needs is more stability. We must not act prematurely or undermine the community's right to be a part of this decision. This petition ensures the integrity of the process and respects the voices of the people. And I'll just say that, you know, as someone who won by one vote, I understand how hard it is to mobilize communities, particularly communities of color, to do anything. And the idea that we're going to even think that we can compare District 8 to District 7 under these circumstances is, to me, I feel like more of a political playbook here. And I think I'm going to push back on this whole notion, because here on this body, I've been consistent in supporting waiving special elections, because special elections only favor special interests and people who have power and political power brokers behind them. And right now, we have not even, we don't even know what's going to happen with whether or not our council colleague is going to vacate. So I think everybody needs to just pause and allow democracy to play out and give the voters of Roxbury an opportunity to fully vet those folks who are running right now. People are popping off the woodworks in this moment. To rush this election is to further disenfranchise District 7. So I'm going to say for the record, if people want to be about the people, this is the opportunity to show up for the people and not take away District 7's ability to fully vet someone who is going to represent them in the future. We cannot compare Beacon Hill to Fort Hill. We can't, not in this moment. And so it's really important for us to be responsible and for all of us here as colleagues. There's 13 city councilors, and I know you all have your own districts to represent, but we have four at-large city councilors, right? We can stand in that gap because we've done it in the past. And because we know that we could do it, we have an opportunity to step up for Roxbury in a big way. And that is through constituent services, that is making sure that whatever votes we're going to take around the budget, if we get to that point, that we are engaging District 7. But what we're not going to do is play the race card around the voters. You can do this to white voters, and you can't do it to Black voters and vice versa. It's not about that. Historically, we know that people of color have a hard time mobilizing to get out the vote. That's very different in District 8. And so it is not about hypocrisy, it is about democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Peppin. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I begin by saying this, that I deeply respect and value the community of Roxbury and the entirety of District 7. I know how strong, vibrant, and resilient this community is, because I've seen firsthand the leadership and care when I worked for two years for former District 7 City Councilor Tito Jackson, who was actually a product of a special election. Roxbury deserves representation, not just any representation, but bold, dedicated, and consistent leadership that speaks to the needs of the people every single day. That is why this decision to have a special election or not is not easy. A special election by design is meant to fill a vacancy quickly and ensures that communities aren't left without a voice. On paper, that sounds like the right thing to do, and often it is. But in this case, the timing matters. If there were to be a special election, it would be more than likely to be a special election sometime in about late July or August, to then have the candidates run again for the September preliminary election or the November general election. The pros of a special election, it would provide a District 7 a voice sooner. It sends a message that we won't allow any community to go unrepresented. But the cons are that the timeline would create a situation where a candidate might serve for just a few weeks before having to campaign again, reducing their ability to meaningfully serve during that time. Most importantly, it risks creating voter fatigue and confusion, particularly in a district that right now deserves clarity and full engagement in their leadership process. I've been weighing the pros and cons for how to vote on this. The home rule petition put forward today would allow the candidate who wins the election in November to take their seat sooner rather than later and not wait until January as usual. Something we should also consider is to make sure that we are all stepping up to the plate here. There's four at-large city councilors, and even I, yes, I represent District 5, I could show up to Roxbury as well, and all of us, we can do that in this time. My decision to not support a special election does not come from a place of apathy. It comes from a place of strategy and care. I want to see the residents of Roxbury elect someone who is ready and able to serve a long term, someone chosen through a clear, robust, and fair process, not a rushed one. So to the people of District 7, I hear you, I support you, and I will continue to work with my colleagues and advocates for the resources, policies, and attention you deserve. We want to ensure your concerns are lifted and addressed even while the seat is in question. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, and I think all of us, or most of us, putting our lights on, speak to the importance of putting this in committee so that we can have a hearing in the Government Ops Committee, and we know that there are times open to do that. So rushing to just have another special council meeting, which would, I assume, circumvent the need for all of us to be on board today, I think speaks to us not being able to really talk through it. I think it also brings up the point, which I've thought about a lot. I was sworn in because of a vote on the council back then in '21, where they knew when, because there was lots of conversation about whether or not Mayor Walsh would leave before that magical 180-day. And many of those conversations on the council were similar to what we're feeling now. Will it be rushed? Should we have the current council president, who was the acting mayor? Like, there was lots of conversations. People had lots of good, strong, compelling arguments on both sides, but as we saw that happen then, the mayor didn't leave early enough. So the debate over whether or not there would be a special for that mayoral time was mute, and it may be, like it's already been brought up here, something we don't even need to deal with. If the councilor from District 7 does not resign before May 8th, and it's my understanding, the soonest it could happen is the 5th, so there is a small window of when her resignation may happen before that deadline, but I do also want to say I respectfully disagree, and I'll share the reasons why I do disagree. As an at-large city councilor, I am compelled to address this recent home rule petition, which seeks to cancel a special election in District 7. To me, I believe that this move would deny residents of Roxbury, Dorchester, Fenway, and the South End their rightful representation at City Hall. District 7, Boston's largest Black community, has historically faced under-representation and economic challenges. Denying them a voice now only perpetuates this injustice. Two years ago, when Councilor Kenzie Bach resigned, we promptly held a special election in district date. There were two candidates, and voters in Back Bay, Beacon Hill, Fenway, Kenmore, West End, and the Mission Hill had their voices heard. That timeline, as we know, many of us were here. The letter went to the clerk in the beginning of April, and her resignation was at the end of April. The winner, who is our colleague now, was sworn in at the end of July. That's four months sooner than what a canceled special election, if there is necessary, what would happen. Because I do agree that if the special election is canceled, or she leaves after the date when we can hold one, making sure that whoever wins the special election is allowed to get sworn in sooner after the votes are certified. Concerns about the cost and voter fatigue are valid but not surmountable. They are very surmountable. The value of ensuring that all residents have representation in city government outweighs these expenses. The timeline outlined by my colleagues assumes voter confusion and administrative strain. But what I hear from District 7 is different. They want their voices at the table now. They don't want to wait. And I do just want to share the many historical presidencies when our election department, whose job is to not only hold the general and regular elections every year, but to also, when a need for a special election happens, that we do that too. Dan Cullinan was elected in 2013 under a special election to the House of Representatives following the resignation of Representative Linda Dossinafori. Dan Hunt won his special election in 2014 in the 13th Suffolk District after then-Representative Martin J. Walsh resigned to become the mayor of Boston. Adrian Madero elected in a 2015 special election for the 1st Suffolk District, succeeding Representative Carlo Basile, who resigned to serve as Chief Secretary and Governor Charlie Baker's administration. John Moran secured the 9th Suffolk District seat in a 2023 special election following the resignation of Representative John Santiago, who went on to head the newly-formed Veterans Office at the state. Bill McGregor won the 10th Suffolk District seat in a 2023 special election after Representative Ed Coppinger resigned. Linda Dossinafori was elected in a 2013 special election to the State Senate 1st Suffolk District, succeeding Senator Jack Hart. Nick Collins won a 2018 special election for the 1st Suffolk District Senate seat after Linda Dossinafori resigned. I live in that district. Was there a lot of elections? Yes. Did it stop the voters and the candidates to get their voices out? No, I don't believe it did. Lydia Edwards was elected in a 2022 special election to the State Senate 1st Suffolk and Middlesex District following Senator Joseph Boncorri's resignation. Now I'll speak to the special elections that have happened in recent years here on the council. Stephen J. Murphy was elected at large in a 1993 special election following the passing of Christopher Ionella. John Tobin won a 2001 special election in District 6 after Council Amara Henigan vacated the seat. Matt O'Malley was elected in 2010 to a special election to represent District 6 after Tobin's resignation. Tito Jackson secured a District 7 seat in a 2011 special election following the expulsion of Councilor Chuck Turner. It was okay for the exact same district then. Gabriela Coletta elected in 2022 special election for District 1 after Councilor Lydia Edwards moved on to the State Senate. Sharon Durkin, it was an off-year, you're right, but it was a special election. It absolutely was an off-year, and it didn't back up.
Counselor?
Okay. But when colleagues interrupt or speak out, I do just want to, because I know that it was an off-year, because 2022, right, yeah. Sharon Durkin, as we know, and I do want to say too, and I did reach out but couldn't speak to our colleague. want to say too, and I did reach out but couldn't speak to our colleague. We're speaking about us, each other, colleagues, and so to speak with the names, it is, I mean, it's what we have to do, but it does seem a little not as personal as needed to. But I'm just sharing facts. It's not about, so Sharon Durkin, who won on July 25th, 2023, the special election in District Eight, following Councilor Kenzie Bach's resignation. So we have a long history, and it's the job of our election department to deal with and administer special elections. It's also true, because of many different reasons, there is a long list. Many have, I've spoke with, met with, and have watched them campaign. There are already a lot of good, strong candidates who have put their name out there, and today, as we know, put their actual name on the ballot for the election coming up in the fall. So it's not as though District Seven is caught off guard. Many people in this district have already shown that they're able and willing to represent District Seven. I have filed a resolution, which will come up later. So if you read that, you know I do disagree with rushing this. So I do want to block a suspended pass, because I feel as though we need to have a conversation. But I also want to ask, if I can, through the Chair, to the council president who filed this, why we're scheduling a special council meeting and not a hearing to discuss it more in the Government Ops Committee, where I assumed this would have gone.
Through the Chair, Council President Louie Jen, if you wish to respond.
Yes.
The floor is yours. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And I would also like to say that no one here is arguing that special elections aren't a thing that happened.
Counsel Murphy.
No one here is arguing that special elections aren't a thing, it's the timing of it, right? So if Counsel had resigned at a prior date in December, I don't think anyone would be questioning, or in January, anyone would be questioning having, it's the timing here and the resources, and what Black and Brown members of the community have been saying, and what members of this body who have worked deeply in Black and Brown communities, often because we are Black and Brown ourselves, are saying about what this timing would mean. And because, like I stated, and this is good wording that I got from my colleague Counsel Braden, we are trying to work quickly here so that we can slow down the process. And that is why I scheduled a meeting for Friday.
Thank you. Counsel Murphy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And my point of order was just, I was hoping that, which you did get to, thank you, that she was speaking to the question that I had about why are we rushing to vote and not just having the conversations that I believe. Just like we don't want to rush a possible election, we shouldn't rush this body into drawing lines that I don't believe need to be drawn. And the timing, absolutely, like, almost to the day, if it happens, matches what we did on this body two years ago. And I do believe that the residents in District Seven, I believe the residents in the entire, all of the city of Boston, can definitely do this, and they deserve that. And I also agree that as an at-large councilor, and all of us, willing and able, but I believe we're always willing and able to step up and support all the residents across the city of Boston, which is something I've always done, I'll continue to do. But in this case, I'm not in favor of suspending, spending and passing this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that?
I'd always say.
She objected to.
I'd object to.
All right. Counsel Murphy has objected to the homer petition.
So can I add something?
Go ahead. What I would like to do, Counsel Murphy, is go to the councilors who haven't had an opportunity to speak yet. But Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Okay. I don't, people say you should let us vote, you shouldn't. I also think we should have let a hearing order that Councilor Flynn and I filed two months ago, to have the election department come in and talk to us about what does receivership mean, what are these shortcomings, how do we support you, something that I know that Secretary Galvin is saying he doesn't think we can handle a special election. That hearing isn't happening. The administration is refusing to send people to answer what I would hope all of us on this body want to hear from the election department and those in charge of receivership. So I do, I was just going to stand to say, because I think this should be in a hearing, and everyone has a right to their voice, but it also breaks the protocol of once someone blocks, it does get stopped. But I was standing to ask, I will wait to block it if needed, again, because I do want everyone's voices to be heard. So if you're okay with me holding that, or withdrawing it, so we can formally, then I will put it back on the floor. But I do want my colleagues to be able to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And really want to thank Council President Louie Jen and Counsel Braden for putting this forward. I agree with Counsel President, Counselor Braden, and particularly Counsel Mahia on your sentiments. I grew up in District Seven, I grew up in Atlas Taylor BHA Apartments in Mission Hill, and I just recently moved back to District Seven. So I am a constituent in the neighborhood, and I am in support of this, of what's being put forward. I believe that Roxbury and District Seven, and the other surrounding neighborhoods in that district deserve to be able to vet their candidates. We have, as Counsel Murphy mentioned, there's a lot of candidates already in the field. And I think that District Seven deserves to be able to have the time and the thoughtfulness to be able to get to know their candidates and be able to elect a counselor if necessary, when the time comes. I already know that my at-large councilors have stated this, but I believe that this is an opportunity for particularly the at-large councilors to step up, in particular with constituent services. Again, as a resident of District Seven, I know my office will be, will make sure that this is a priority for us, making sure that District Seven residents have an office that they can come to and get resources from and be represented. So I am in favor of this. I understand that there will be a block of this, and you know, we'll continue moving forward with that. But I do believe that we need to pause the special election and give District Seven the voice that they deserve. And that's why I will be voting when the time comes in support of this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. I'm not going to highlight what I wanted to speak about. I do understand that an objection has been made. So I want to respect the rules. I would add one brief point, is I represent a large portion of the South End, along with John Fitzgerald. And I know both myself and John do a tremendous amount of work in the South End, and we will continue that advocacy in the South End and Roxbury as well. I don't want to speak on exactly what my points are, because there's been an objection, and when there's an objection made, the rules state that basically the conversation ends. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And for the record, Counsel Murphy withdrew the objection and allowed for further conversation on the matter. Counsel Fitzgerald, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Counsel Wil. Look, is four elections in this timeframe coming up overkill? It probably is, right? Does it cost money to run this special election when we're on a fiscally tight budget this year, and that could be money saved? Yes, probably. But I've got to say, I've heard people say things like, let democracy play out. And if we're going to let democracy play out, that would be actually following the letter of the law, which we should let play out. I also want to remind people, it's not the residents' jobs to vet the candidates, but rather, it's the candidates' job to vet the community. So we shouldn't be afraid to let the hardest-working candidate separate themselves during this process to gain the community's trust and their vote. And so, while it seems like a lot and almost some unnecessary stuff, given the timeframe, it's still the timeframe on the books. We may get the result that we probably all personally want, which is say, no special election, just given how this plays out naturally. But I've also heard things that say, people say, well, it's politically advantageous to have this, to have a special election. But I think conversely, it's also politically advantageous to somebody, I don't know who, I don't care, but it's politically advantageous to somebody to not have a special election as well. The point being is, we have rules on the books, we should let them play out. It may be most likely that it's going to be past May 8th anyway, and there won't be a special. But the fact that we're inserting ourselves into this seems to have sort of some political advantage to somebody somewhere. And again, I haven't done the math, I don't know. But we should just follow the rules on the books. And I think, lastly, it's important to have more faith in the people of Roxbury and District Seven, to allow them to do these elections. And I feel like by taking it away and saying it's a down year and people don't come out, that is up for each district and each constituent to make their own decision if they want to come out during that. Our job here is to put forth the process that is laid out. So I think we should ask the Berry what they want to do. We're hearing from both sides, really, what they're, you know, we heard some people say we don't want it, some people say we do. When there's a conflict like that, we go to the books and we follow the letter of the law, and I think we let it play out. And as an abutting, also always here to help at any point where there is an empty seat, as an abutting district, our office is always here to help with folks in that district as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Mahia. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. And I want to thank my colleagues for their feedback thus far. And I just want to note for the record that my council colleague was naming all of the special elections that we've had, and I just want to note a pattern, that the majority of the people that have won those elections have been white and/or male. And so, further proving my point, that oftentimes, you know, people of color usually are at the disadvantage. And so I just want to be clear that for me, you know, it's really important for us to recognize who is to be most at harm in regards to this particular race. While I do appreciate there's been hundreds of candidates that have stepped up to the plate, we don't know who now is lurking in the behind-the-scenes, ready to come through in this last moment with much, with many more resources, and/or, you know, just far more well-resourced and politically connected at this point. So I just want to name that, that usually the people who tend to benefit the most from these are people who are well-resourced, well-connected, and ready to go. And as someone who only won by one vote, I worked very hard for that vote, and I know how difficult it was for me to run across the entire city and vet community and have my voice heard. So I understand and appreciate the power of working hard to earn those votes. So I do appreciate Counsel Fitzgerald's point around the work that the candidate needs to do. So thank you for that. And I will reiterate again that this is an opportunity for us to really step to the side and let District Seven lead. And from what I understand, there have been lots of folks from District Seven who have asked us to do just that.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. I wanted to respond to a few points that were made, as a person who sponsored this, and a person who sponsored this in deep partnership with community. It is, you, to work in communities of color and to understand what it means for people who are balancing multiple jobs, multiple things, to know when elections are happening, a special election at that, that is off-kilter, that is in the summer, that is hard work. And it is important that we are doing everything we can to bring voters into the democratic process. Our job is to bring democracy to people, and to do everything we can to be supporting that work. That is what this is about. It's not looking at any political cards to see what will not happen. It's how do we make sure that we are engaging the voters of District Seven who deserve the best representative? And we know, because of the role of money in politics, and we know because of things outlined by my fellow at-large colleague, Counsel Mahia, that there are other factors that often go in to who wins in a special. And so, my other colleagues have also stated very clearly that perhaps there is an issue with the timeframe of this law, that we get this cutoff. A lot of the specials, the special election that existed for this seat, the person was in the seat, the District Seven council was in the seat by March, so that they could have an impact on the budget. Whatever happens here, special or vacancy or whatever, a special would not put somebody in that seat for the budget. And we are not acting like there is no precedent for this. It has happened with, I think it was a 12 to 0 vote of this council in 2021 to waive the special election because of timing, because we are people who understand that a special election that would happen at the end of July, at the earliest possible schedule, the earliest, earliest, and we're already past that because we don't have a vacancy today, that that is a disservice to communities that have too often been disserviced. The only thing that I care about here is how we engage voters in District Seven. I don't care about anything else. It is a district that deserves the most zealous representation, that deserves the best district councilor that they could possibly get. And what gets them there is not a special election. And I am saying that not because that is my opinion, but that is the opinion that I have heard from members of community, because I am in Roxbury, was there last night again, was there all weekend, along with Counsel Mahia, listening to what community wanted. This is not my idea. This is not Counsel Braden's idea. This is an idea in community because this is what is best for a community that is too often forgotten by this city and by the powers that be. That is the only reason behind this homer petition. And so to others who have said, I think Counsel Mahia did a good job in describing why this is dissimilar from 2023, but I am also very open to having discussions about what would it look like, to say that 180-day cutoff doesn't make sense. The Secretary of State, yes, he has weighed in, but what matters most to me, he has weighed in in opposing this, just as a matter of resources and overlap and the time schedule. But what matters to me at the end of the day is the residents of District Seven getting the best possible candidate that they can get. And that does not happen with a special election. Again, this may be moot. The purpose of this homer petition is leadership for our city, leadership for all of those involved, to know what the election schedule would be, to take that uncertainty away, which is why we are acting, again, expeditiously to get certainty in what the schedule will be, acting quickly to slow it down a bit for the residents of District Seven.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you all so much for mentioning my election so many times. I really, I really was proud to have gotten elected in that special election. I do want to say there are a couple differences this year than two years ago. One is that this is a mayoral year, so we expect this election to have a lot, this fall election to have a lot higher turnout. And then, two, obviously, I think a lot of people are talking about demographics and how my district may be different from District Seven. I don't really think that's what we should focus on today. I think that we should, what we should focus on is, I believe I was very much elected in a legitimate fashion, one that is offered by the city charter. I also believe that this, that the city council has a decision to make, should there be a special election in District Seven. Given everything that's been going on, many people have suspected that this seat would become open. Many people, there was energy, there are people running. I don't think this is really about politics, I really think this is about what's best for Roxbury and District Seven. So when I hear colleagues like Senator Liz Miranda say that they don't want there to be a special election, Rep. China Tyler doesn't want there to be a special election, Council President Louie Chen does not want there to be a special election, Counsel Mahia does not want there to be a special election, when Counselor Santana does not want there to be a special election. When I go through this list, and I look at the leaders who are saying this might not be right for Roxbury, and this might not be right for District Seven, those are people I trust, those are people that I value their opinion. And so I understand people wanting to make a comparison between the race that I ran in, which I obviously worked really hard. I know a lot of you saw me running around the city. My district is very different than District Seven, but I need to remind you all that we share the Roxbury Tea Station. I work really hard up until the line to make sure that all of the residents of Roxbury crossing get what they need, and I am an abutter to this district. So that's why when I hear Rep. China Tyler and Senator Liz Miranda say something, I work with them in Mission Hill. work with them in Mission Hill. They're people I like, they're people that I trust. And so I just want to take, you know, I, just because my, my election has been mentioned so many times, I just want to take this moment and say, we have a decision to make today. If I had been on the council two years ago, I don't know what decision I would have made about my race. All I know is that the seat was open and I was interested to serve, so I stepped forward to serve in that seat. And I'm really honored to serve District Eight, and I'm really honored to serve alongside all of you, but I don't think this has to be a fraught decision. I think we just need to ask ourselves in our heart of hearts whether we think it's a good decision in incredibly high turnout election this fall, whether Roxbury would be served better by a lower turnout election or a higher turnout election, and whether Roxbury would be served better by getting the turnout of a mayoral year. And I, I think obviously it's a decision that we have to weigh. It's one that I have weighed with the Council President personally. I knew that like there would be eyes on me in this conversation because of how I was elected. And I just want to say, if I had had to run in the fall, I would have done the same thing. I would have worked and worked and worked to earn the support of the people in my district. And I think whoever runs in this is going to have to work and work and work to earn the support of their district, whether that is in a special election or the fall. And so I'll just say that I am with the Council President, I am with Senator Liz Miranda, I am with Rep. China Tyler, I am with Counsel Mahia, I am with Henry Santana, in saying if those folks are saying no special election, I will be supporting their recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just, I'm rising in support of the home rule petition. You know, I want to applaud Counsel President Louis Shen, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Brayden for building the community support for this. I think this is the kind of hard work that, you know, we're called upon in this job. You know, they knew there's a tagline out there, you know, we need to have, treat Beacon Hill the same as Fort Hill or Fort Hill the same as Beacon Hill. But, you know, I think that's empty rhetoric. Here we have to do what's right for the folks of District Seven. I think we've seen by the support of community leaders and the community that this home rule petition does that. Also, you know, I want to push back on any suggestion that we're sort of skirting the rules by doing this. The charter allows, calls for a special election, but clearly, you know, as past practice indicates and this home rule indicates, we have this tool at our disposal, and I don't think we would be doing our duty if we just ignored, you know, that possibility and allowed something that isn't going to be in the best interest of District Seven residents, won't be in the best interest of the city, may hurt the Elections Department and all the other reasons why we've heard. So, you know, I just want to thank the filers for going through this difficult process and doing the work and bringing this before us, which I support the home rule. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take a time to provide some remarks. I want to do thank Counsel President Louis Shen and also Counsel Brayden for working with community on this home rule petition. And I completely understand the intent. I do want to also make the distinction that in 2023, we knew when Counsel's resignation was taking place. In this case, we don't know. We do know that we have a handful of candidates who've already been working with the September and November elections in mind. That wasn't the case the last time. I think we all agree that in principle, that the way that this was done for district council vacancies is probably not the ideal way. We're talking about four elections in five months, and all the district councils here know the responsibility that we have. It's constituents who won't have a district council for the start of school, they won't have anyone to represent them at development hearings, licensing hearings, and more. And I think that what I've heard from residents, that there needs to be a plan, that needs to be clearly communicated to the residents of District Seven on how the council will take on those tasks. But I'd like to, for whatever choice we make, to be standard going forward, right? I don't, I want more consistency in the decisions that we make, and I think that goes into looking to changing this charter and maybe if someone is appointed, if a vacancy happens, maybe it's a special election without a preliminary, but it's a ranked choice vote, or it's just increasing, you know, the 180 days to 200, 225, whatever we agree on. But I don't think what we should do is continue keep changing the standards with one-offs. I think we just should find a time and a place to fix the charter amendment for good so we're not coming back to the counselors, council having this conversation. Those are my remarks. Counsel Brayden, the floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's really valuable to just take a quick look at the timeline for our election schedule. As of today, we do not have a vacancy, so this sort of, we're talking hypothetically here. But the last day that would trigger a special election is May 8th. So if our colleague resigned on May 7th, and we had the deadline for voter, the deadline for applications for nomination would be May 23rd, the deadline for filing nomination papers would be May 29th. This is apart from the fact that many of the candidates are already signing and doing this process for the November election. And then the deadline for classification of certification of signatures is June 12th, the deadline for withdrawals or objections is June 17th, and then the special preliminary election, because we'd have to have two, would be those three dates, three possible dates that would work on the calendar, July 15th, July 22nd, or July 29th. And then the special municipal election, the final election, could be August 12th, August 19th, or August 26th. We're talking about having four elections in the space of about 12 weeks at a cost of $200,000. And I, I think that the position, the suspicion, the suspicion, the position of skipping or not having a special election is supported by the Secretary of State Bill Galvin, and he's called the prospect of a special election a waste of time, is $200,000, and ineffective at a time when our Elections Department is under operational review by the Secretary of State's Office. So if, say, we had the final election on August 26th, those same candidates would be on the preliminary election on September 9th, like a week or two later, and then the final election would be May, or November 4th. It just seems like this is the most logical and sensible way to handle the situation right now. And I think all our, all our conversations about how important it is for the residents of District Seven to have the opportunity to have some certainty in the timetable, some clarity, like the notion that the person who takes office on the 26th of August will actually be an effective city counselor in those first, in those two months between, you know, when there's a preliminary city council election and the final general election in November, and then the certification process, they would be, they would be expedite their swearing-in in November, and we would have a seated city council, counselor for District Seven in an expedited fashion. So I still urge my colleagues to vote in the affirmative in support of this home rule petition.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counselor, you have the floor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't offer my opinion yet, and I'm not going to do that. I still think the right place to do that is an informal hearing. Counsel Murphy asked to place this in committee. I think everyone had their opportunity to have their say. Mr. Chair, can we go, go forward with the, with the meeting and, and the debate if Counsel, if Counsel Murphy already asked for a suspended pass?
She has to say it right. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
And thank you, Counsel Flynn, for wording it the way it is. It's not that I'm trying to block the debate, it's that I'm asking that it properly goes into the proper committee and that we hold a hearing so that this conversation continues and that we, as colleagues, have the time to talk that through. So I am blocking a suspended pass of this and hoping that we can get the hearing scheduled soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 0901 refers to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0902?
Docket number 0902, Counsel Pepean offered the following: Order to adopt Chapter 270 of the Acts of 2024 regarding local law enforcement continuity between the City of Boston and the Town of Devon.
Thank you. This docket has been withdrawn. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0903?
Docket number 0903, Counsel Santana offered the following: Order for the Boston City Council to hold a policy briefing on the public safety and criminal justice implementation and impacts in the City of Boston of the S.H.I.E.L.D. law, known formerly as the Massachusetts Act expanding protections for reproductive and gender-affirming care.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today I rise to introduce a hearing order calling for a policy briefing on the implementation and impacts of the Massachusetts S.H.I.E.L.D. law here in the City of Boston, formally titled "An Act Expanding Protections for Reproductive and Gender-affirming Care." This law passed in 2022 was a bold and necessary step in the face of national attacks on our rights. It protects providers, patients, and anyone assisting with access to care from civil and criminal liability when that care is legal in Massachusetts. As the largest city in the Commonwealth and home to the world, world-renowned healthcare institutions, Boston has a special responsibility to ensure our public safety and criminal justice systems are upholding this law. That includes making sure our departments from law enforcement to licensing bodies are aligned with the S.H.I.E.L.D. law's protections. This policy briefing will give us a clear understanding of how the S.H.I.E.L.D. law is working on the ground and here in Boston, what's working well, where can we improve, and how we can continue to leave in protecting both reproductive and gender-affirming care. I respectfully ask for my colleagues' support, and I look forward to a robust conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to thank Counsel Santana for bringing this idea for a policy briefing forward for an unfortunately timely topic, as many of our community members near and far continue to be scrutinized and attacked for who they are or the kind of health care they need, from gender-affirming care to illicit reproductive health care, both which are often life-saving. Our right to privacy goes in tandem. With our right to health care access, this bill is an important step in protecting both, and I think it's fitting to offer a plug and uplift in H. 86 and S. 197 of the Massachusetts Location S.H.I.E.L.D. Act in the same breath. This act similarly centers around protecting people's data privacy and will prevent the access and sale of personal location data and private health care information by third parties without consent. The longer we go without explicit protections against this behavior in our state, the more malicious actors with the intent to harm will continue to have unobstructed and dangerous access to patient location data, including the knowledge of when, where, or why someone will make an appointment at a clinic. No one should be allowed this kind of unadulterated access to another human's, being's privacy. I see, I see this, I see these as inherently tied pieces of legislation for the greater good of Bostonians and for all people seeking gender-affirming and inclusive health care and security in our state when they cannot access it otherwise. When people have the ability to make their own health care choices, when they can privately and freely make the decision they need to make, to keep themselves healthy, when they feel safe in their doctor's office, when they feel respected and affirmed for who they are in person and online, and we raise our children to understand and respect these rights as intrinsic to all people, we are all better for it. I look forward to this conversation and seeing how we can work to expand and enhance these protections. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors... Oh, you would like to speak on this matter? Okay. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry about that. Can I just add Counsel Orell as a second and original co-sponsor to this?
Counsel Orell is so added. Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to adding names. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Brayden, Kalida Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Pepean, Weber. Please add the Chair. Please add Counsel Flynn. This docket will be referred to Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0904?
Docket number 0904, Counsel Flynn offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss creating an oversight committee on accountability and compliance on the Boston City Council.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am filing a hearing order today to discuss the creation of an oversight committee on compliance and accountability for the Boston City Council. While Boston City Councilors and staff are currently required to complete mandatory conflict of interest training annually by the Massachusetts State Ethics Commission, there have been a series of legal and ethical lapses over the last several years by members of the council, which have undermined the credibility of the body. I have also advocated for transparency in public disclosure when it comes to releasing five years of state and federal tax returns for all councils, as well as the statement of interest, financial interest submitted annually by city councilors to the city clerk's office. This form should also be sent to the Massachusetts State Ethics Commission as well. As city councilors, we are placed in positions of public trust and should demonstrate the highest level of ethical standards and integrity. The last several years have highlighted the need for an outside oversight committee composed of non-affiliated and relevant experts that will review council matters to restore public faith in our government, in city government. This oversight board may possibly meet quarterly and include a number of functions, such as ensuring members are in compliance with all relevant rules and regulations, reviewing conflict of interest matters, identifying and investigating any alleged violations, and proposing reforms to prevent further offenses. The formation of the board may potentially include the city council president, a retired Massachusetts or federal judge, a representative from, maybe from the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, a college or university administrator, a Boston resident. Although the city council voted against ethics reform in January, it is critical that we revisit this conversation and discuss the creation of an oversight board, again, made up of non-affiliated, relevant, and outside experts, to help restore credibility with the people of Boston. This body has lost its credibility. We must acknowledge that the public has lost faith in the Boston City Council, and we must act accordingly. The status quo, my friends, is no longer an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Murphy. Please add Counsel Fitzgerald. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Rules Administration. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0905?
Docket number 0905, Counsel Weber offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the impacts of social media on Boston public school students.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to add Counsel Pepean as an original co-sponsor.
Counsel Pepean is so added. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Okay. If Counsel Durkin is watching, please come back. But I may add her as a co-sponsor. I'll leave that possibility open. I know some other people do support this. But, so I, I've got two teenagers at home, and I know too well the experience of looking up at the dinner table and talking to someone whose head is buried in their cellphone. That's why I thought it was interesting, a month or so ago, I took a tour of English High School with Superintendent Skipper, and Principal Caitlin Murphy said, "Do you see anything interesting here?" And I was looking down the hallway, and I did notice kids were talking to each other. And she said, "Yeah, we, we've banned cellphones in the school, and it has really, this year, you know, we finally got the kids to kind of buy into it, and as a result, there's more social interaction with people, and it's overall had a good impact on the school." So, you know, my office and I, we looked at, you know, cellphone policies and social media, and, you know, we found some disturbing trends. People have found that increased use of social media by teenagers increases anxiety, depression, increased incidences of eating disorders, and in school, use of cellphones have been linked with lower performance and cyberbullying. The London School of Economics did a study and found that removing cellphones or banning their use in schools resulted in improved test scores, especially... or banning their use in schools resulted in improved test scores, especially for disadvantaged and lower-scoring students. Recently, the Los Angeles School District banned cellphones, and the state of California, as of July 1, 2026, will be requiring that all cellphones be placed in storage containers so that while they can be used in emergencies, they are not going to be able to be used just in the daily course of events. And so, you know, I think we've all seen how social media impacts probably our lives, but it impacts our kids even more. I know we heard from Superintendent Skipper at a hearing a couple days ago about how, you know, the district is interested in working with each school individually to find out what's the solution that works at that school. I know in this space, I think Council Durkin has already done some work, Council Santana, Council Mejia, Sociedad Latina, in looking at the impact of use of cellphones in our schools. So, I think it would be a good thing for this body to have a hearing, see what impact social media is having on our kids in school. And I would like to add Council Durkin as a third co-sponsor. I don't know if I need to... Whatever has to happen for that to happen would be great. So, thank you. I look forward to having a hearing on this important subject.
Thank you. Council Weber seeks to spend the rules to add Council Durkin as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Council Durkin is so added. I'm going to... The second co-sponsor was Council Pepe. So, the chair recognizes Council Pepe. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to thank Council Weber for bringing attention to an urgent issue affecting our students and families across Boston. All over the city, I've heard from educators and parents concerned about how social media is shaping our kids' mental health, academic focus, and sense of self-worth. As a parent especially, we need to do better understanding both the harms and the potential benefits of this technology, and most importantly, we must center student voices in the conversations. This hearing is an opportunity for us to listen, to learn, to explore ways to support our young people in digital world that wasn't designed with them in mind. I also think that this is going to be a great opportunity as well to bring in BPS, because I know that sitting in a meeting like this, Councilor Mejia, Councilor Weber, and myself, we have received text messages from our children and our siblings saying that the school is on lockdown, and the only reason we found out about that was because they had texted us. So, I think that we have to also ask BPS to come up with a better solution to alerting parents, alerting guardians of what's happening, because sometimes the cellphones are useful in certain situations. So, I just want to make sure that we are bringing all those conversations into the table, because we have to look at this holistically and make sure that, you know, the least distraction as possible is happening in our classroom, but also the proper communication is happening with guardians and parents. Thank you so much for adding me to this. I look forward to the hearing.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Durkin. Council Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair, and I was so excited to see Council Weber file this, and thank you so much for including me as a third co-sponsor. Sociedad Latina in my district and the Shaw Foundation, which are both located in District Eight, had worked on a toolkit with the Attorney General on social media policy and just driving sort of youth engagement and how we should deal with social media policy, and also what impacts does it have on student wellness. So, so excited to have this conversation at the city council. I'm grateful to Councilors Weber and Pepe for their leadership here. I think, for me, I think we've all seen social media and how obtrusive it can be, also how cellphone usage and the impact it has on kids. I know oftentimes when you have a tiny child, they sort of tell you, "Oh, only this much screen time." Obviously, parents have trouble doing that, but as we get to high school and middle school, I think it's really important that our schools have rules and that we have sort of some sort of way in which we are prioritizing their mental health and everything that they need to survive and thrive. So, having toured a couple of BPS schools, there's so many different policies. There's not one policy. So, I think it is a really important conversation for us to have at the city council. So, thank you, Council Weber. Thank you, Pepe. And we will be having a conversation soon.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for bringing this forward, an important conversation I'm looking forward to having. I myself also get text messages from teachers, parents, and students when something's happening at their school. And I do just want to uplift then Representative Ed Coppinger, who I know was working on something at the State House, because he also was frustrated, along with many of his colleagues up at the State House, that you would hear it from the media, or you would hear it, someone tweets out, you know, that certain schools are locked down, or there is an incident, but being a parent at the same school, you're hearing maybe a day or two later, and it may not even match what the police report stated. So, I do think it's important that students and teachers have the ability to reach out to loved ones, but at the same time, how do we balance that with the need for our students to be focused and getting the best education that they can get? So, I'm looking forward to participating and also talking with Representative Coppinger and finding out where that went at the State House and how we can make sure we're making this conversation and this policy as strong as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor. What? I don't... I wasn't... Did I get the order wrong? I don't know. Yeah.
But just in case.
Okay.
I rise. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the sponsors. And I was one of those that wished I was one of your original co-sponsors, but I'll ride your coattails. I'll show up to the hearing, and I'll be there. And so, you know, I just wanted to just... My daughter is constantly on social media, and I think that there is a lot to be said that even the fact that she's not supposed to be on social media while she's in school, you wrote this hearing order with my daughter in mind, because the lack of attention that she is putting in while she's in class really is... Could have an impact on her academics. And so, I also want to just uplift too that it's not just also the mental health and all those other issues. There's also, you know, violence and issues that spill out that's happening on social media that brings into the classroom and spirals out of control. And then I just think that we are living in a very different age, and I think that whatever we need to do to both have access to information in a timely fashion while also making sure that we're protecting our kids is a good conversation to have. So, I want to thank my colleagues and especially the lead sponsor for bringing this to the chamber, and I look forward to having the conversation. And I will ask, since I'm not the one involved in the scheduling of this, that we do invite some young people to be part of the panel. I think that oftentimes we're talking about people, and this will be an opportunity to hear directly from young people who are also out here, you know, having their social media situation. And so, would love to work alongside you all to help you bring some young people into the mix. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I look forward to this conversation. Please add my name. I also wanted to highlight, I think it's an important discussion. I also wanted to highlight, I think one of my colleagues have mentioned it as well, it's a balancing, balancing between, you know, supporting our students, but also ensuring our parents or the guardian also is aware of what is happening, as Council Pepe mentioned about an incident. But I thought about parents or a guardian that may not have access during their job to a cellphone. And, you know, the fortunate families do have access to a cellphone and have access to that cellphone at their particular job during the day. Well, some of my constituents don't have that luxury to have their cellphone on them during the day and/or to check it the entire day. They have to put it away. So, I just want to ensure that those families or guardian, their voices are also heard in ensuring that there has to be a way for them to receive the appropriate information, relevant information that other parents that have access to a cellphone as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Worrell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Council Weber for introducing this hearing order. Our students are growing up in a world where it's nearly impossible to unplug, and many of my council colleagues have mentioned this already, from focusing, distraction, and also cyberbullying, and some of our incidents with our young people also arise from social media. I just also want to just thank Council Weber for presenting and talking about the data and the studies that speak to why we need to have these conversations now, but also want to just acknowledge the work of my predecessor, Attorney General Andrea Campbell, who's been leading important work at the State House to better understand and respond to these issues through the Study Act. Her leadership has helped elevate the conversation statewide around how we protect students' mental health and ensure our schools are placed for focus, safety, and support. So, looking forward to this conversation, and thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes... Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Santana. Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also just want to thank the lead sponsor, Council Weber, for filing this and the co-sponsors as well. You know, as many of you know, my number-one priority has been our youth here in the city of Boston, and I'm very glad to see this filing. Just a few weeks ago, my office launched what we call Santana's Youth Force, and it's a 13-person body of youth across the city of Boston who are coming together to inform our Office on Youth Priorities, and it's being led by three of our youth ambassadors. And this is in partnership with Sociedad Latina in District Eight in Mission Hill. We've been in communication about this very topic and the impact that social media has on our students and has on their mental health. So, I'm looking forward to this hearing, and I want to just echo what Council Mejia said. I think having youth be part of this conversation, I think, will be critical and crucial, and I look forward to partnering with your Office, Council Weber, to do just that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to follow up, and thank you to my colleagues for their thoughtful comments. And this is a balancing act. I think when this was debated in Los Angeles and in California, you know, on the other side of bans, people argued that, you know, students need cellphones to ensure, you know, public safety, that if they didn't have access to technology like laptops and things, cellphones provided an educational aid that... And some studies have shown that, especially folks in marginalized groups, LGBTQ students in particular benefited from access to social media and positive reinforcement. So, you know, I think as part of the discussion, we will have to do that, you know, sort of weigh, you know, all sides of this debate, and I look forward to the discussion and figuring out what we can do that's best for our kids. Thank you.
Awesome. I want to really thank my colleagues for this filing and for my colleagues who have made statements. I think that it is incredibly important, especially as we think about mental health issues, about social media use. So, I look forward to this conversation as well. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Kalida Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Worrell. Please add the chair. This docket, docket number zero nine zero five, will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, could you please read dockets number zero nine zero six?
Docket number zero nine zero six, Councilors Murphy and Flynn offered the following order requesting certain information under 17F regarding state receivership of Boston's election commission.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe that the conversation, the long conversation we had earlier speaks to the need for answers that we deserve on this body. I filed several weeks back, two months ago, the hearing order along with Council Flynn to call in the Election Department and any other bodies, the Legal Department and others from the administration, to really give us a full understanding of what it meant when the Secretary Galvin made his decision after auditing our Election Department, what it really meant that we were put into receivership or a receiver was assigned to us. So, when I hear others say that we are making ill-informed decisions, I agree with them, because none of us really do know exactly what the Election Department is under receivership exactly for and what structures have been put into place because of that. And we did finally get a hearing order scheduled. It was put into the Committee of the Whole. It seemed as though vacation week next week, many hearing order time slots were open. So, this was scheduled for Wednesday, April 23, at 10:00 a.m. Council Flynn and I sent several letters to the committee chair, but also sent a direct letter to the Commissioner and others in the Election Department, telling them how we were looking forward to the upcoming hearing and included questions, so that they were aware of what we were looking for. And just found out recently that no one from the administration is available, so there won't be anyone at the April 23 meeting at 10:00 a.m. To me, that's unfortunate. It also is a pattern that the administration for certain councilors doesn't... Don't attend hearings or don't send the people we want. So, people obviously have lives, they have schedules, but when the city council, all we need is a 48-hour period to inform city departments when we'd like them to come into the chamber to speak. We gave them weeks to be available and be here to answer. So, I'm hoping that we still have that hearing, knowing it was also important to me to hold that hearing before today, when the election season has started, and in light of the fact that there is a possibility of or not a special election coming up this year. So, the questions that I'm hoping to ask under this are listed here. It also highlights some of the things that I did find out but don't have real reasons why. One of them is the governance structure. The Elections Department has always been under the Law Department, and it seems as though now it falls under the Human Resources Department. State receivership details, operational failures, so I don't need to read through all of them, but I do think it's important that we get these answers as soon as possible, but that we also hold a hearing and have the administration show up when we ask them. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would respectfully ask if we're able to hold this hearing before we hold the hearing on the home rule petition that was placed into committee today. I think it's important for us to have a good idea of exactly what is happening at the Election Department, so it prepares us, we're thoroughly informed about exactly what's happening at the Election Department. It's critical for city councilors and candidates, but especially to residents of Boston, to have faith and confidence in the Election Department. Secretary Galvin was very clear, in my opinion, that he doesn't think that a special election could take place in Boston for this D7 seat, because he doesn't believe the city of Boston Election Department is effectively able to administer voting on that day. I don't disagree with him, but I think it's important for us as city councilors, especially district city councilors, who understand the importance of basic city services, to know exactly what is happening in a particular department. I think we all want to find out. We all want to have a hearing. We need to know exactly what is happening at the Election Department. And, Madam Chair, I would ask if this hearing would go before the home rule petition. Thank you.
Councilors Murphy and Flynn, see expansion of the rules and passage of this docket. All in favor, say aye. Aye, this docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number zero nine zero seven?
Docket number zero nine zero seven, Councilor Mejia offered the following resolution in support of House Bill Number 148, an act establishing a livable home modification grant program.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Mejia. You have the floor.
On to lighter matters, Madam. Okay, so, today I rise in strong support of House Bill Number 148, an act establishing a livable home modification grant program. For so many of our residents, seniors, people with disabilities, and those living with chronic health conditions, homes should be a place of safety, dignity, and independence, but without the right infrastructure, that goal remains out of reach. This bill proposes a grant of up to $5,000 to support and cover essential home modifications like zero-step entrances, wider doorways, accessible bathrooms and kitchens, and backup generators. It also supports individuals earning up to 120% of the area median income, and includes automatic eligibility for those who don't file federal taxes and aren't covered by other programs. In Boston, we hear from residents every day who are doing their best to care for aging parents, disabled family members, or themselves, often without the financial means to make their homes livable and accessible. This program would be a lifeline. Let us send a strong message to the State House that we here in Boston are ready to back up policies that help our residents remain safe, supported, and at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I ask the maker a question about this resolution?
To the Chair, you may.
No, you may not.
To the Chair, you may.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I know it's a grant that would be paid for by, through the state of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but do we know how much this will cost taxpayers? And what will be the impact on taxpayers on this particular program? And I really want to know if the state can afford this program. If the state can afford it, then I would support it, but if the state is having trouble with their, with various issues, I would like to know that as well.
To the Chair, Counselor Mejia, if you would like to respond, you may.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we can't afford not to support this, Counselor. I think that when we're looking at the grand scheme of things, the state, and it was Representative Carol, Representative Carol Dougherty, who co-sponsored this bill alongside other legislators. And I am going to just offer for consideration is that the proposed program would allow eligible individuals or caregivers to receive grants up to 50, excuse me, 5,000, covering up to 50% of retrofit costs. In terms of the dollar amount of what it would cost to do this, I can't comfortably state to you what that would look like. This is a resolution, and I think the legislative intent of this is to go on the record that we are here to support our seniors, those folks who are living with disabilities and/or other chronic health conditions. And our hope here is that we are supporting an initiative that will help create financial relief to those folks who are vulnerable. And that is the resolution that I'm putting forth with that intention and not a question in regards to the taxpayers and how much this is going to cost. This is up for the debate right now at the State House, and I'm just rising in support of the folks that we are trying to support that will be the beneficiaries of such a grant. I hope that is helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Mejia, for bringing this forward. I'm a physical therapist by profession, retired one at this point, but this is an incredible, incredibly important legislation at the State House. It is vitally important as we have an aging population, that folks who choose to live at home, in their home and aging place, that their homes are able to be retrofitted and made more accessible with grab bars and ramps and chairlifts or whatever they need so that they can continue to live in their homes, and also for those who are caretakers, to make their life easier as well. So thank you so much for bringing this forward, and I will be voting in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please, Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Counselor Mejia, expansion of the rules and adoption of docket number 0907. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0907, Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anniston. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Pepe. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0907 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0907 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0908?
Docket number 0908, Counselor Worrell offered the following: Resolution supporting the Museum of African-American History in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want a motion to substitute the resolution. It's a minor change, tweaking some language in the fifth whereas.
Is that motion seconded? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion for substitution is allowed. New docket is in front of colleagues.
Thank you. I'd like to add Counselor President Louie Jen as a original co-sponsor.
I'm so added. You have the floor.
And I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Durkin as a third original co-sponsor.
Counselor Worrell seeks to suspend the rules, add Counselor Durkin as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Durkin is so added. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
The Museum of African-American History is a vital part of Boston's story. It sits on Beacon Hill and stands as a reminder of the contributions Black Bostonians have made to our city, from the fight to end slavery to the ongoing struggle for equity and justice. For more than six decades, it's preserved the legacies of abolitionists, educators, entrepreneurs, and everyday people who shaped Boston's soul. From Frederick Douglass to the students who once sat inside the Abil Smith School, this space is sacred, and now is under attack. Earlier this month, the museum was told it no longer serves the interests of the United States, and nearly $500,000 in federal funding was stripped, almost one-sixth of its total budget. At a time when our country is continuing to navigate how we engage with our past, this decision feels like more than just a budget cut. It sends a message. But here in Boston, we know better. A country that doesn't acknowledge its harm, such as keeping Black men and women chained and oppressed, can't find the help it needs to overcome the effects of that harm. People who don't know their past power can't see the hope they might need to summon once again. Sure, this is about funding, but it's also about preserving history so we can learn from it. We know that preserving Black history is preserving American history. We know our kids deserve to learn spaces that tell the full truth, and we won't stand by while institutions doing that work are undermined. This museum is doing the work. With exhibits like the upcoming one on the Emancipation Park of Mason and programming that bring thousands of families and students through its doors every year, it continues to teach, inspire, and challenge us. This resolution reflects our shared belief in the importance of preserving this history and supporting those who safeguard it. I respectfully ask for my colleagues to suspend the rules and pass this resolution in full support of the Museum of African-American History, and I look forward to working with our partners at the State House and any charitable foundations that want to step forward to ensure that this institution continues to thrive for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say that it is egregious, the funding cuts that this museum is facing. It is egregious what this administration is doing, stripping our history, Black history, which is American history, from websites, stories about who Heritage Clubman is, about Surjana Truth. It is unacceptable, and it is unacceptable, the funding cuts that the museum that was already doing so much on a shoestring budget is facing. So I want to uplift the work of Dr. Noel Trent at the museum and all the incredible work that she does, our park rangers, federal employees who do the work of sharing the trail with residents, with tourists, with everyone who comes, with people without a history have nothing. And that museum is so important to the history and to the fabric of this city, to letting Black people know that they have a place and a history in Beacon Hill. Last term, my office alongside Counselor, but then Counselor Bach, which was serendipitous, we met her because she lives in Beacon Hill, did a fantastic walking tour of the African-American Trail in Beacon Hill. And just last month, in February, or in April, two months ago, we did a partnership, we did a program in partnership with the museum for Black History Month that was beautifully attended, and I will never forget, a woman from Dorchester who stood up and said, with tears in her eyes, "I didn't know that Black people had a history or a place here in Beacon Hill." And so the museum is doing a great job of bringing people from our different neighborhoods to Beacon Hill, sharing the rich, rich, rich African-American history on the hill, and so it is important that we stand with the museum and make sure that they have the funding and support that they need, and that we stand staunchly against these cuts and that we support our park rangers and the incredible work. I look forward to the continued work that I'll be doing with Dr. Noel Trent to make sure that we are doing everything we can to protect the important history that that museum holds. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair, and I think both of you said it beautifully, but it's with a heavy heart that we even have to have this conversation. We have an administration that doesn't understand or doesn't care that Black Bostonians built Boston, that they, that our, that Black history is etched in our neighborhoods, brick by brick. This museum is the cornerstone of that legacy. It tells the stories of Black Bostonians who have shaped our city and our country, and invites all to reckon with that, the truth and beauty and horror of that history. But it's more than a funding cut. It's a failure to uphold our responsibility to the memory of Boston. And I'm sick that, I mean, seeing the update, it reminded me of the day after seeing the Tuskegee Airmen being removed from training materials. It's just this disgusting feeling. And I have to say that Woody Woodhouse, General Enoch Woody Woodhouse, who we honored for Black History Month, or actually before Black History Month, he was a founding member of the Board of the Black Heritage Trail. So it just shows you sort of every single piece and every single person who has poured themselves into this over time. But I live less than a block away from the Black History Trail, and there's so much going on in Beacon Hill around the 250th, so just to have this happen right now is so gutting. And we need to do everything we can to support them. So I know there are some fundraising that's going on to back up the museum, so what, and I think we can all share that and figure out ways to support them, but there is going to be a huge gap, and we do need to figure out how we can step up. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For six years, I was proud to represent this museum in my district. I represented a great portion of Beacon Hill and learned a tremendous amount from this museum about the incredible contributions and sacrifices African Americans have made to our city and country. When I heard about this issue, I sent a letter immediately to Senator Warren and to Senator Maki, and I sent it to the, and it was about the saving our Institute of Museums in Library Services, and I just wanted to read a little bit to you. I am writing today to respectfully ask you to voice your opposition to the March 14th Executive Order targeting the Institute of Museums in Library Services. This executive order intends to dismantle this important agency, and I urge you to speak up to the current White House administration against the harmful approach that this will hurt our treasured museums and libraries. It is of the utmost importance that we continue to support these institutions that are vital to the culture and knowledge of our nation. Museums and libraries play a unique role in our country. They are places where ideas are exchanged and cultures are shared. This executive order threatens the invaluable role museums and libraries play across the nation and in Boston. Here in Boston, we are fortunate to be a major hub of history and culture and arts and sciences. We have the cherished Boston Public Library. We also have incredible digital programs, digital Commonwealth programs for English as a Second Language and outreach to our immigrant communities, especially on library services. Our well-loved institutions such as the Boston Children's Museum, Museum of Fine Arts, the Museum of Science have also received grants in the past to keep our residents informed, families and students engaged, and develop a thirst for knowledge. I join these institutions, residents in my city, state, and federal colleagues, to oppose these attacks and to respectfully ask you to urge the White House to fully restore and protect funding so that our museums and libraries here in Boston and across the nation can continue to thrive. I thought it was important to share that because this is the agency, the Institute of Museums and Library Services, that actually made the cut to the African-American Museum up in Beacon Hill, a place, as I mentioned, that I represented for six years and when I was city council president, I also had a, I also brought city councilors and city council central staff to the museum for a tour and a lunch as well. So grateful for the museum, the incredible role they play, not just in our city but across our country as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the sponsors for putting this forward. It's important that we uplift this museum. I do a personal story back in 2005. My son was a sophomore in high school, and he needed to do a report on the Black History Trail, which started at the museum. But back in 2005, there were no such things as smartphones. If you had a phone, it was a flip phone, or no social media. So he needed, in that case, his mom came along with him and took pictures at each stop and then wrote about it. So for me, it was very eye-opening, one thing, you know, knowing that I had lived in this city all this time and known it was there, I guess, but had never really taken part in the enormous impact it has and the information that it shares that I think is important. So knowing that there is a chance that this could be shut down in any way, if anything, we should be making sure that we're expanding it. So looking forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone looking, is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Counselors Worrell, Louie Jen, and Durkin, expansion of the rules in passage of docket number 09, and adoption of docket number 0908. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0908, Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anniston. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Pepe.
Yes.
Counselor Pepe, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0908 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This docket has been adopted. Can we also please add Counselor Pepe's name to that docket?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I also be remiss not to mention Dan Delaney, who's here, who does a lot of incredible work with the museum, and thank you for your advocacy for the museum. It's really appreciated and noted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0909?
Docket number 0909, Counselor Coletta Zapata offered the following: Resolution in honor of Earth Day.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to add Counselor Braden as an original co-sponsor.
Counselor Braden is so added. Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I rise today to produce this or present this resolution in honor of Earth Day. My community of East Boston, or in my community of East Boston, environmental protection is not an abstract concept, and this is not hyperbole in 2025. It is a matter of survival. East Boston is on the front lines of the climate crisis. Our residents breathe in cumulative impacts from Logan Airport. We have tunnels and major throughways, major roadways, and the residents live in flood-prone areas with limited green space and aging infrastructure. For us, climate change isn't a far-off threat. It is the next storm, the next flood, and the next asthma attack. That's why Earth Day is more than just a symbol. It is a chance to reaffirm our commitment to environmental justice, and it's a reminder that our policies must be guided by equity and that the voices of historically marginalized communities must be front and center in every climate conversation. But I also want to issue a clear warning today. As we work locally to build a sustainable and just future, we are facing an alarming rollback of environmental protections at the national level. The deregulatory push, similar to what we saw in the 1980s under President Ronald Reagan and what we're seeing today, threatens to undo decades of progress. Ronald Reagan, and what we're seeing today, threatens to undo decades of progress. Gutting clean air and water rules, weakening climate action, and once again placing profits over people is unacceptable. Deregulation means more population in neighborhoods like mine. It means more extreme weather, more displacement, and more health disparities. It's not just reckless, it is immoral. Boston must continue to lead. We must double down on resilience, equity, and community-driven solutions. Earth Day is not just a celebration, it is a call to action, and East Boston and every environmental justice neighborhood in this city is counting on us to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilors Coletta Zapata, for including me in this resolution recognizing Earth Day. I think, I think we're all of a sudden realizing just how precarious life is on this planet, especially in times of great political upheaval, when our leaders at the national level and in, in Congress seem to just turn their back and alter any sense of responsibility for their, our duty to steward our beautiful small planet. We have many, many fragile ecosystems, as Councilor Coletta Zapata already mentioned. Climate change is, is upon us. It's not something way off in the future. We used to talk about we needed these goals to be hit by 2030. Well, 2030 is five years away, and it's coming fast. Rising sea levels are a reality. Coastal communities have been displaced all around the world. Some small island nations are going to disappear off the map completely. We're losing the habitat, and we are seeing the extinction of many species of animals. This is our earthly home, and we have a huge responsibility to protect it and preserve it. It seems ironic that there are trips that there's a certain very rich man in Washington at the moment who wants to go to Mars to search for water. We have so, our lovely planet is 90% water, and we're destroying it, we're polluting it, we're dumping trash into the oceans, and we're not taking care of the beautiful treasure that we have. It's a very great concern that our departments in government such as NOAA are being defunded, and that research, climate research has been defunded, and investment in alternative renewable energy is being defunded. And I really feel as a member, as a person who has members of their family lost their home in Katrina when it hit New Orleans, you know, we're all in a very precarious state, and we all have a huge responsibility to try and address climate change and support ourselves, but also be mindful of what happens here. This is a global challenge that we all have to work to address globally as well as locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for filing. It's incredibly important that we acknowledge our duty to be good stewards here while we're here on this earth, and how there's a disproportionate burden on our Black and Brown communities and our EJ communities. And I want to thank both of you for your, for your work. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I also, you know, I want to thank the makers for bringing this forward. I also want to mention the district I represent, especially in Chinatown, has one of the highest asthma rates in, in New England, really, and for various reasons. But part of it is because it's located, it's located off of the highway, 93, 95, in Mass Pike, but also the bus terminal of a cell station and the train terminal, train station as well. But I, I highlight those facts because we want to ensure that we address the public health issues impacting communities of color and the impact it has on their quality of life, on their health. But we need to do more to ensure that we provide every opportunity to protect, protect our residents with clean air, with safe and healthy neighborhoods. And part of that is addressing the ongoing environmental challenges many communities of color have across the city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. That was my attempt to slow down, Mr. Clerk, because I realized I was going a little too fast. Okay. Councilors Coletta Zapata and Braden, suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0909, and adoption of docket number 0909. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0910?
Docket number 0910, Councilor Coletta Zapata offered the following: Resolution commemorating the 250th anniversary of Paul Revere's Midnight Ride.
The chair recognizes Councilor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. If you are asking yourself, is she going to recite the poem, consider this your answer. Listen, my children, and you shall hear of the midnight ride of Paul Revere. On the 18th of April in 75, hardly a man is now alive who remembers that famous day and year. I will spare my colleagues from reciting the other 135 lines of Henry Wordsworth, Longfellow's famed poem, but I do just want to speak my seventh-grade history teacher's name, Mr. Edward Seddon, who made all of us recite 138 lines of this poem. So I just want to give him a shout out. Today, I rise to honor a revolutionary moment that echoes across two and a half centuries, a ride that began in Boston's historic North End, crossed the darkened Charles to Boston's first neighborhood of Charlestown. The moment in the subsequent poem is woven, like I said, into every curriculum in every seventh-grade history class, and I know that everybody knows what happens or what had happened. There are variations of history here, but ultimately, what we are trying to do on Friday is to celebrate this revolutionary moment and what it meant for our history. His midnight ride on April 18th, 1775, was not a solitary act of heroism, but a coordinated warning cry, a call to arms that set the colonies on a path towards revolution. His lanterns in Old North Church, his landing in Charlestown, his alert to the militias in all of the Charlestown taverns, all were acts rooted in resistance and can act as an inspiration for all of us today. His journey began on our cobblestones, driven by urgency. And as Boston faces modern struggles and the nation struggles for justice and equity, Paul Revere's story reminds us that ordinary people can step forward in extraordinary times. The 250th anniversary this week is more than just a commemoration. It is a recommitment to liberty, to civic duty, and remembering that democracy is not built by just those in power, but by those willing to act boldly in moments of uncertainty. So the events this week and this resolution can act as a reminder that Boston's identity and the nation's identity as the cradle of liberty is not inherited, it's earned again and again. Thank you all so much, and I hope to see you all at the many events that are taking place on Friday and Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Coletta Zapata. The chair recognizes Councilor Braden.
I feel like I'm a usurper here. I didn't, wasn't taught American history, but I am, I am a member of the Alston Brighton Historical Society, and I want to give a shout out to the other guy, poor William Dawes Jr., all guts and no glory, as it says. Paul Revere went one way, he went across through Charlestown, but the other guy that set off on the midnight ride was, on April 18th, 1775, Dr. Joseph Warren learned through the Americas, Britain, Boston's revolutionary underground, that British troops were preparing to cross the Charles River and march to Lexington. And fearing the, an intercept by the British, Warren had devised a redundancy plan to warn Hancock and Adams. He would send two, one rider by land and one by sea. And so Revere, I suspect, went by sea, and the guy Dawes was 30-year-old militia man and a loyal patriot. But unlike, unlike Revere, he wasn't known to the, as a rabble-rouser, and his work as a tanner frequently took him out of Boston. So he would be, so he would be a familiar face to, to the British manning the checkpoints. They reckoned he, because the back bay was literally a bay, he had to go through Roxbury, Brookline, into Brighton, and across and out to Lexington by the inland route. And he did there. He managed to get there a half an hour after Revere arrived in, in Lexington. So we will be honoring Dawes on, on Monday morning, about 10:30 at the Hill Memorial, the former Hill Memorial Church on Harvard Ave in Alston, across the street from the Honan Branch Library. Just give a shout out to the guy that nobody talks about anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. The chair recognizes Councilor Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you. And as long as we're recognizing teachers, I'd just like to recognize a professor of mine at Brandeis, David Hackett Fisher, who wrote a book called Paul Revere's Ride. It's very good. I recommend it. It shows how important Paul Revere wasn't just a guy on a horse, it was somebody who was an integral part of, of life here in Boston at the time. And I do remember during the class, they were talking about casting decisions. Apparently Arnold Schwarzenegger wanted to play Paul Revere at some point, but that movie never got made, probably, you know, for the best. But, you know, for anyone who wants to dive a little deeper, I recommend Professor Fisher's book. Thank you.
Thank you. Lot of, lot of history lessons here. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Councilors Braden, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell? Please add the chair. Councilor Coletta Zapata, suspension of the rules and pat, and adoption of docket number 0910. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0911?
Docket number 0911, Councilor Murphy offered the following: Resolution calling for the prompt scheduling of a special election to fill the vacancy in District 7.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. I know many of the conversations have already happened. The content is similar to the Home Rule petition that was filed earlier, but I am calling for a resolution to schedule and be prepared for a special election in the D7C. As we know, the District 7 Councilor has pleaded guilty and has publicly announced her intention to resign from the position. The residents of D7 deserve timely and effective representation to address their needs. While there will be an interim period before a special election can be conducted, I feel it's imperative that we prepare for that and support our election department. We also know, since I first filed this, that there will be a hearing. The Rule 11 hearing was scheduled by the judge. So there is a hearing on May 5th, and that is the day. It is believed that a guilty plea will be entered. So I do believe at that point, we could move forward and schedule a special election. I don't need to go into all the details. I know we've already talked about them. I'm also looking forward to the Home Rule petition that has been placed into the Government Ops Committee, so we can continue this conversation at those hearings in that committee. But I'm asking for a suspension and pass now. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, just want to state that, because the clerk and I have talked about this quite a bit. In order to call a special election, this is clear in the Section 15A of the Charter, you have to have a notice of vacancy. That's what triggers a special election, just so that everyone knows. The chair recognizes Councilor Weber. Councilor Weber, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just, I, my understanding is that after, guilty plea is entered on the 5th, let's just say that happens, that would not create a vacancy. Correct me if I'm wrong, anyone feel free. My understanding of the, from reading the Chuck Turner decision, is he was convicted, and the council voted, it was like 11 to 1 or 12 to 1, to remove him, and the SJC said that was too early. It couldn't, under state law, the vacancy isn't created until the sentencing. I think there's a difference. I don't believe the sentencing will occur on May 5th. I think that may be as much as three months later. So I just, I just, that's my understanding of it. If somebody else has a different understanding, they may be right. I'm just, when I, when I'm thinking of it, I, maybe that's a question to the filer. But my, my feeling is state law sort of kicks someone off the council when they're sentenced, and that in the Turner case, they, we, the council acted too soon because they acted right after the conviction. The vacancy isn't effective until the sentencing happens, and I think that's a separate proceeding, usually three months later. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Braden. You have the floor.
Madam Chair, I, we've had a very, very extensive conversation about this issue already this afternoon. I, I tend to agree with Councilor Weber, you know, the, there's a lot of speculation happening here. And even at the earliest date, as I said, if the earliest date of, if the sentencing, if the, the judgment is given, I'm not a lawyer, beg your pardon. But the, May 5th, if, if, if it all, if May 5th is the, the date, and then there has to be a sentencing procedure, that kicks it past the, the day that triggers the need for special election. So I think this is a mute, this issue is mute at this point, and I, I think this is, I object. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This docket, docket number 0911, will be referred to the committee on the whole. Mr. Clerk, we are now, there's an objection. It's sent to committee. Mr. Clerk, could you, we are now on to, Councilor Murphy, what is your point of order with respect to?
I objected, and we set a precedent for this council meeting because this important issue that's being brought before us, that even though Councilor Braden is wanting to object, to not get a vote, that we still let people's voices be heard. So I'm asking for the same grace that I gave when your Home Rule petition was put before here, because I could have stopped the conversation, and I think it was important that everyone was able to speak. So I'm asking you to allow people to speak on this matter.
Thank you. There, you withdrew your objection. There's been no withdrawal of the objection here. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we are now moving on to personnel orders. But before we get to personnel orders, if anybody would like to add their name to a docket or to, or a vote while they were out of chambers, now is the time to do so. The chair recognizes, is that a, is that a maybe? Yep. The chair recognizes Councilor Peppin. Councilor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you. May I add my name to docket number 0907?
Mr. Clerk, do you have that, docket number 0907?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Peppin, your name has been added to docket number 0907. Anyone else would like to add their name to a docket or change a vote? No? Okay. Okay, so we are now on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the personnel orders?
Personnel orders, docket number 0912, Councilor Louie Jean for Councilor Peppin. Docket number 0913, Councilor Louie Jean for Central Staff, and Councilor, and docket number 0914, Councilor Louie Jean for Central Staff.
Thank you. The chair moves to passage of dockets number 0912 to 0914. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The personnel orders have passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Also, thank you for letting Central Staff know in advance, but I don't believe anyone has any green sheets polls. No? Okay.
I don't think so.
We are now moving on to late files. I have been informed by the clerk that there are two late file matters.
I have a green sheet.
Oh, you do have a green, okay. Let's pause on moving to late files. There is a green sheets poll. I don't have the number. Councilor Flynn, could you please read the docket or tell us, Mr. Clerk, do you have the docket number?
No.
Okay. He does not have the docket number. Councilor Flynn, if you could please read the docket number.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize for not being ready at that time. 0687, please.
0687, what committee?
Arts, Culture, Entertainment.
It's in the Arts, Culture and Entertainment Committee, Mr. Clerk. Let's give the clerk some time to find that docket, docket number 0687.
It's on page one of the green sheet.
Thank you. Do you have it, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, could you please read it into the record?
From the Committee of Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism and Special Events, docket number 0687, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $350,000 of former grant for the Red Sox Arts and Parks Program Grant awarded by the Boston Red Sox to be administered by the mayor's office. The grant will fund arts programming, community events, and parks operations across Boston.
Thank you. Absent objection. The, the motion of the committee chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I made a commitment to Councilor Durkin that I would bring this forward this morning, so I wanted to keep my word on that. But before I begin, Councilor Durkin, do you want to start, or do you want me to start? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Flynn. The chair recognizes Councilor Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair, and I want to thank the Chair of Arts and Culture, Councilor Flynn, for his first action, pulling this from the green sheets. So I think we've had extensive So I think we've had extensive discussion about this grant on the council floor. This is a $350,000 grant that will fund arts programming and community events and park operations. We've talked about, we've gotten a little more information. I do want to share that we've gotten a couple of letters that were originally addressed to the former Chair of this committee. And I just want to read some of the quotes from the community members. This is from, I believe, the, so we've gotten support letters from the Fenway Alliance, which is the, does a lot of the business organization stuff, and then does a great job, and also the Fenway Civic Association. So one of the quotes is, "We believe it to be a fair, compensatory contribution and community benefit for Fenway residents tolerance of significant issues that arise from being the neighbor host to 81 Red Sox games and 12 major concerts per year. These events bring with them significant traffic, noise, trash, and pedestrian congestion during the spring, summer, and fall seasons. Moreover, this grant replaces the funding our community has been receiving as mitigation for the Fenway Park Demonstration Project Grant. The source of the funding was used for beautification efforts for over 10 years in the Fenway neighborhood, but it ended in 2024. For a neighborhood with limited avenues for supports for the arts, no Main Streets organization, no libraries, or BCAF centers supporting community activities, these dedicated funds fund a necessary resource for our highly impacted communities." And I just want to share, because I know there were some questions. The grant last year valued at $325,000, was obligated as follows, and could be a rough framework for the spend down for this year's grant as well. $100 was given to parks, and that parks money was specifically earmarked for the Back Bay Fens. $100K for Arts and Culture, and that was for grant money for the Fenway. That, and then, or sorry, yeah, $100K. They didn't spend $10 of that, but they spent $99,990. And then $100,000 to the community. Like I previously said, $40,000 of that was spent on Love Your Block. ONS was the recipient of that, and they paid for the tools for this year's Love Your Block citywide. And they may still have some funds left from that that they're using this year. And I'll just say the $60K that was given to the Fenway Neighborhood Impact Grant, that was part of the community money. I served on the committee that decided where those funds were put. And Fenway Kenmore Neighborhood Impact Grant gave to Muddy Water Initiative $10,000, Charles Gate Alliance $5,000, Fenway Civic Association for Fenway Cares, which funds the food insecure in the Fenway neighborhood in both the East Fenway and the West Fenway, $35,000, and the Kenmore Association $10,000. Most of these ended up being parks-related. And our community, we have a lot of great parks organizations within the Fenway. So I think that sort of answers all the questions from the last time this was pulled. And I just want to thank Counselor Murphy and Counselor Mahia. We both had great conversations about this, these resources. And I just want to thank them for their leadership and talking to me about how, you know, how this was all, you know, how they needed more information. I think they got that information. And also, again, thank you to the Chair, Counsel Flynn, for pulling this.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counsel Durkin, for that update. I also want to say thank you to Counsel Mahia, Counselor Murphy, as well. Counsel Durkin mentioned what the funds would be used for. I do want to give a little bit other information. Maybe it wasn't covered. Some of it was, actually, though. But I also want to recognize Vanessa from my team that helped me do some research on this, and she worked with Counsel Durkin's office. This is a, as we know, $350,000 grant from the Red Sox Arts and Parks Program that, as Counsel Durkin mentioned, will fund arts programs, community events, parks operation with a specific focus in the Fenway and Kenmore area. It's the second year this grant has come before this body. Last year, the same grant for $325,000 came before the council and was passed as well. The community, as Counsel Durkin has mentioned, they expressed strong support for this grant. The Fenway Alliance, which represents 22 institutions in the area, as well as the Fenway Civic Association, have provided letters of support. Fenway is a wonderful neighborhood. It has a population close to 40,000 residents in an area of 1.25 miles. And it's home to the Fenway Park. The neighborhood faces undue impact from 81 home games and 12 major concerts. Residents deal with quality life issues, traffic, noise, trash, pedestrian congestion during the spring, summer, and fall. This grant would go towards community benefits for Fenway residents, including replacing the funding Fenway has been receiving as a mitigation for the Fenway Park Development Project. That source of funding was used for the beautification efforts over the past 10 years in the Fenway neighborhood. However, that ended in 2024, as Counsel Durkin mentioned. For a neighborhood with limited avenues for support for the arts, no Main Street organization, no libraries, BCAF centers, these dedicated funds will provide a necessary resource for a Fenway in the highly impacted community. For these reasons, my recommendation, along with Counsel Durkin, is for our colleagues to pass this grant to support the neighborhood of Fenway and Kenmore. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, so Counsel Flynn seeks passage of docket number, I wrote it down.
0687.
Of docket number 0687. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0687. Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta Zapata. Counsel Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louzien.
Yes.
Counsel Louzien, yes. Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe. Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 0687 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. This docket has passed. Are there any more polls from the green sheets? No? Okay. We are now moving on to late files. I'm informed by the Clerk that there are two late file matters, and they are two.
One.
Absence letter?
Absence letter in the communication.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the two late file matters into the record?
First late file matter, communication from Counselor Fernandez Anderson. I hope this message finds you well. I regret to inform you that we are unable to attend today's council meeting. Sincerely, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. And the second is a communication from Counselor Murphy and Counsel Flynn. Emergency request to reschedule special city council meeting. Dear Council President Louzien, we are writing to express grave concern regarding the scheduling of the special city council meeting on Friday, April 18, 2025, which coincides with Good Friday, a solemn and significant day for Christians worldwide. Sincerely, Counsel Flynn and Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. Both dockets will be placed on file. But as that last one was addressed to me, I'll just state that I, as a Christian, also observe Good Friday, and it's an important, solemn day for me and my family. We also have a tight timeline. Next week is an even busier and harder schedule for all of, for everyone, given that it is school vacation week. On Friday, we have the BRJP filing that I'm on with Counsel Weber, who has been observing Passover. So we, it is a working day for us on the council. And also, on the docket, on the homo petition, we did hear from our colleagues. And it seems like, you know, folks know where they are on this matter. And so if people did not want to come in on Friday, there is an ability to withdraw your objection and just allow for the vote. If not, we meet on Friday. We have a hearing on Friday to do the work of the council. And so that, I take the letter, and I know that we have important work and that the schedule gets even crazier next week with people and school vacation, and we don't have a council meeting. I, this is a communication. I am going to ask my colleagues to keep it brief. And I, but I will recognize you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. Just to set the record straight, next week, I think there's six openings for hearings to be scheduled. Monday is a holiday. So there is plenty of time next week. And also, my objection meant that it was placed into the Government Ops Committee. And it seems as though the intention for the special council meeting on Friday is to circumvent the need today. Correct me if I'm wrong. But what I get from what you just said is there is no intention to hold a hearing in Government Ops that you hope to vote on Friday morning to pass this, and that the intent to actually have a conversation in the correct committee is not going to happen because today you would need unanimous consent on the first day that something's brought in front of the body. But on Friday, it won't be the first day. So if you could please explain that so we're clear on what the intent of the meeting on Friday is.
You did a great job, Counsel Murphy. That's it. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor. But Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am respectfully asking my colleagues and the Clerk as well not to schedule something on Good Friday and Passover as well. A lot of people have family obligations that they already have made plans with their family for. They've asked me to mention this to the body. It's also a day for Christians, really, to not do anything other than be with their family and attend Stations of the Cross. And it's a, it's a day, really, not for politics, in my opinion. I will be here, but it's highly inappropriate for me to be here to engage in politics at that time. I just want to be honest and upfront with people that it's not the appropriate day for me to be engaged in politics when I should be doing Stations of the Cross with my, with my community in the South End. As you probably know, I haven't missed a day at the city council in seven, seven years. Almost eight years I haven't missed a meeting. But, and again, I won't miss the meeting on Friday. But I would respectfully ask for people that do want to practice their religious faith and to be with their family if we can have another day. I think that's an appropriate and respectful request from a colleague that's been here eight years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. And I really do respect you, and I respect your request. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I am requesting that we hold the hearing hybrid. The language has been removed from our rules that it's either all virtual or all in person. So I am requesting, so if some people are in a different space, not able to physically be here, but feel as though it's more appropriate to zoom in, if you could let me know if that's an option for us on Friday morning.
I will consider that request. Thank you.
And when will we know? Because today's Wednesday, so we do need to know.
I will consider that request, and I will, I will let you know as soon as I have thought about what makes the most sense.
But I do just want to make sure my colleagues are aware that we can, it is appropriate for us to hold a council meeting hybrid model.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Murphy. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Oh, my Lord. I just, I don't know what to say at this point. I just feel like I did my first communion, so God be with me. I, and I'm also a single mom, and there's no school on Friday. So like, we all got to make, do what we have, and I will be showing up wherever I need to be because that's my job. However, I will say, for the record, that I am really happy to hear that we have a hybrid model option. So I want to know that I, if that is available, I will take that offer. And I just wish that we can really understand that we, everyone's watching us. So we have to be really super mindful in terms of how we play with politics, especially when it comes to the man up above. I'm sure he's not happy with us right now. And I just think that Good Friday is a Good Friday. And oftentimes, at least in the Latino community, on Good Fridays, we're not even supposed to have bad tempers or, or speak out of, you know, anger, or eat anything but fish. So there's a lot of things that happen on Good Friday. And I think that this is a Good Friday for us to show our most humble selves how to show up for each other and demonstrate that we can work together as a body despite our political and ideological differences. So I am hoping that if President Council decides to do hybrid, I'll be showing up. But if it's in person, I will be showing up either way because that's my job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. Okay. No more late files? It was a little journey? Okay. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the Clerk that there are, there is one addition to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember, these are for upcoming dates and events. We have a lot of birthdays coming up. Candace, happy birthday next week. Our very own Candace on Central Staff, Melissa in Counsel Weber's office, two in Counsel Weber's office on the same day. Happy birthday to Melissa and to Bonnie. Happy birthday to Melissa and to Bonnie. Oh, and also in my office that same day, Julian, happy birthday to him. And to our newest attorney on central staff, Megan, happy birthday to you. A lot of April birthdays. I know that it's Passover, so I want to say, ha'pissach semea. Is that right, counsel Weber? Kind of? Okay. Wishing peace and joy to our Jewish neighbors celebrating Passover. I hope your seder's were filled with tradition, delicious food and the blessing of being with family and friends. We are in Holy Week that started on Sunday with Palm Sunday. I saw some folks in their palms and this Friday is Good Friday with Easter being on Sunday. I hope all who observe have a great celebration with families, with their families. Easter is by far my favorite holiday. On this Saturday, we have the 26 Point True Marathon being run by the pioneers. So if anybody wants to wake up with me at 6:30 a.m. to cheer on the pioneers for their, their marathon before the marathon, you can do that. Patriots Day is on Monday and it's also Marathon Monday, so we wish a good luck to all our marathoners while we remember the very solemn day 12 years ago when this city was under attack and when we became Boston Strong. And just want to, just lift up the families who lost loved ones in that time. The Greek Independence Day Parade, our very own Mr. Clerk will be there, is on April 27th, which is a Sunday, and I encourage everyone to go. A little fun fact, this year at the Greek Independence Day, they'll be honoring Haiti because Haiti was the first country to be alongside the Greeks as they fought the Ottoman Empire for their independence. And Haiti was also the first country to recognize Greece's independence from the Ottoman Empire. So I will be there joyously and joyfully as they honor that history. I see some red lights on, I'm going to go to my colleagues now for any announcements. I see Commissioner Mackey from the Black Men and Boys Commission in the House, thanks for being here. The chair recognizes counsel Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I've already alluded to this earlier, but on Friday night, starting at 5:00 p.m., is the revolution, from revolution to revolutionary evening where we commemorate the 250th anniversary of Paul Revere's ride. That starts at 5:00, so if you have any kids, please feel free to bring them at that time, although the official speaking program starts at 7:30. Mr. Revere will be getting on a boat and rowing across the Charles River to Charlestown. He's going to go into city, city square at that moment in time. There's going to be another speaking program in Charlestown. And then after that, he's getting on his horse and riding all the way down Main Street, going into various taverns and saying the British is coming. It's going to be a really beautiful, wonderful event and I look forward to it and welcome everybody to join us in both the North End and Charlestown. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel Coletta Zapata. The chair recognizes counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. I just wanted to announce again, we are doing a block party in Kenmore Square this year on Marathon Monday. I did send out personal invites to all of my colleagues, but anyone, please join us in Kenmore Square. If you're a colleague that's joining in Kenmore Square, please let me know and I'll make sure that you guys have all the credentials to go everywhere in Kenmore Square that you want to go. So it's going to be really fun. The, the block party is getting bigger and better than it even was last year, so it should be really, really fun and I hope to see all of you there.
Thank you, counsel Durkin. It was a great time last year, so looking forward to it. The chair recognizes counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. A little less well-known marathon tomorrow at Jamaica Pond at 5:30 is the Half, 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 Half Marathon. It's less than a mile. I ran last year and I proudly defeated all kids under six years old, so I'm hoping to maintain my streak this year. So tomorrow, 5:30 at the pond. And I know on Saturday morning at West Roxbury High at 11 o'clock is Parkway in Motion's Easter Egg Hunt. I was there last year, it's a huge gathering. Anybody with any kids or adults want to hunt some Easter eggs? That's a great place to be, 11 o'clock at the West Roxbury High, Millennium Park in West Roxbury. Thanks.
Thank you, counsel Weber. Any more announcements? No. It's only, only, only counselors can speak during, after this. Okay. We are now moving on to memorials. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of anyone, on behalf of anyone who has passed? Okay. Today, we will adjourn today's meeting on behalf of counsel Durkin, Bill DeCrosy. On behalf of myself, John Donald McLaughlin. On behalf of our clerk, clerk adjourned. A moment of silence. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again on, in the I and L chamber on Friday, April 18th, this Friday at 9:00 a.m. Thank you to my colleagues, central staff, the clerk and the clerk's office and the council stenographer and her cookies. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye, the council is adjourned.